Good evening, welcome to the seventh meeting of Fiscally Here 2021 for the Milton Planning Board. My name is April Anderson. I am the Chair of the Board and we'll now introduce the members. Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagayas.
Kathleen? Oh, you're on mute Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Rich?
Rich Beeler.
And we have another member, Denny Swinson, who is our Secretary, who is in the process of dialing in. Tim, would you introduce yourself?
Denny's in. Tim's the director of Planning and Committee Development.
Julia?
Julia Getman-Clark.
Denny, would you like to introduce yourself?
Denny Swinson, Secretary Member.
Great. And Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so the next meeting dates of our Board are next Wednesday. Just remind everybody, we moved the meeting dates to next Wednesday to account for Thanksgiving, Wednesday, November 18th, and Thursday, December 10th. We have some minutes. Denny, would you like to-
April, can I interject there real quick while we have Milton Access TV here? I know that, I haven't looked at the calendar, but I do know that the Select Board and the School Committee meet on Wednesdays. And so I'm wondering if there's going to be an issue with either a live broadcast or being able to record. I'd like to be able to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
Tim, I reached out to them and they said they'd be able to make it on Wednesday.
Oh, alright then, wonderful.
Very efficient.
Thank you, Julia.
Glad you interrupted me because I forgot my little announcement here about coronavirus. So in accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law relating to the 2020 novel, excuse me, Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, this meeting of the Milton Planning Board is to be held remotely utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software. The login and call-in information is included on the agenda and the meeting is being televised live by Milton Access Television, which will also be available on demand. On the Milton Access Television website. So the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Denny, did you have a chance to look them over? Did everyone else have a chance?
I looked at them, they were fine.
Yeah, okay. I would like to move to approve the minutes from October 29th of 2020. I didn't have any amendments, no amendments.
Second.
Any discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote, as is required. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swinson?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. And now we can move on to the staff update. Tim's the ticket away.
Um, so we've been very, we're always very busy. I think I'm going to say that every time, sorry. Deputy Town Planner is getting a little punchy before bedtime. Sorry about that. So one thing that I've been working on is, you may be aware, back when the Master Plan Implementation Committee was working on commissioning a townwide traffic study, which is ongoing and in good shape, just waiting on some traffic to get back to normal so they can do some counts. We can talk about that tool at another time perhaps. But one part of that scope was a bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the town. My predecessor, Bill Clark, had been getting the ball rolling on that. The public health emergency in, earlier in the year kind of derailed those conversations. I have since picked those back up, working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to do a bike and pedestrian master plan. I don't think we've ever done one. This was something that, again, originated out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, initiated by Bill Clark. I'm just kind of picking up the ball on that. So I'll be at the M-PIC next week to talk about that. MAPC had a couple of questions about what our kind of goals and expectations for the plan are. But if we get some of that stuff straightened out, they'll be able to start hopefully in the springtime and we'll have a bike and pad master plan. And I hope to have a little bit more to report about kind of what the scope of that is and what the sort of process is going to look like. But that's something that's moving, you know, again, you know, initiated a while ago, finally kind of getting back up and moving. So credit to everyone that got that started. We may have mentioned last week talking about some budget items. Cheryl had mentioned sort of conversation during the Milton Village zoning process about perhaps doing design guidelines for new development in Milton Village. Cheryl and I had a little bit of a conversation about that last week, so I'm doing some research into similar zoning districts in some of our peer towns and looking into some firms that maybe we could contract with to do that. The Milton Village Design Guidelines. That's, you know, something that, you know, not having been here, but hearing the word from everybody was really an important part of the conversation about making sure that, you know, the sort of the historic nature of Milton Village, there were, you know, some real, you know, hopes that we would have some consistent design guidelines. So also working on that, hopefully have some news to report about that shortly. And then one other bike-related item, the Boston area or Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is basically the sort of public regional body that disperses federal transportation funds, has a small but sizable, I know that's an oxymoron. When we're talking about highway money, it's like jillions of dollars. They've got a couple million bucks to do what they call their Community Connections Program. And that's for kind of small, what they call first mile, last mile solutions. This is, you know, you take the red line for most of your commute, but how do you get from the red line to your office or from the red line to your home or whatever? And these are some of the things that they're providing grant money to do. And one of the, one of the things that you can get grant money for is bicycle supportive infrastructure. Other cities and towns have been exploring the expansion of Bike Share, the Blue Bikes Program, which is in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Brookline, expanding it to Chelsea, Revere, Everett, Watertown. You know, we're probably not there yet for Bike Share expansion, although I think that's something that's fertile ground for our Bike and Pad Master Plan. But I am looking into getting some funding for the MPO for sheltered bike storage for our for our trolley stations, just so, you know, just to sort of encourage people to ride their bikes to the T and then take the T into town. It's always nicer when you've got a roof over your bike when you leave it there all day. So I'm talking with DPW about that. I'm looking into some possible locations. I've reached out to the Bicycle Advisory Committee for their advice on that. So you're just trying to, trying to find every buck that's out there. Allison is really good at that sort of thing. I'm trying to get a little better too. So that's what we're working on. Allison, I don't know if you had anything else that you've been working on that you want to share about?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Some of the things that, excuse me, I've been, have been working on is, as Tim has mentioned, looking at some grant opportunities that are out there. There is a couple that are tied to transportation. Those deadlines are in February, so right now I'm doing a little data gathering to understand what the goals are of the Master Plan Implementation Committee as it relates to bed and pad and bike throughout the town of Milton. And as Tim continues to negotiate some kind of contracts for the plan, we'll keep you all updated.
Great, that is.
That's it.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Citizen Speak and this is the opportunity for residents who have phoned in to share with us your thoughts and your comments. We do have on our agenda tonight our draft 40B letters to the Select Board on the site eligibility applications for 16 Amor Road and 936 Brush Hill Road. If folks have comments about those projects, I would ask that you offer them now because as we move on with our agenda, we will not be having public discussion at that time. So we will call you if you can raise your hand. I see a few hands going up. We'll call you in the order that you raise your hand and if you could keep your, if you could introduce yourself, your name and your address and keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be terrific. The first person who has raised their hand is Sandra De Silva. And Tim, I think you have to, you are the host, so I think you have to unmute. Speaker. Okay.
Hello?
Hi, thank you very much.
My name is-
Your name and address, that would be terrific.
My name is Sandra De Silva. I live at 37 Amor Road. And I don't think this development, I'm not opposed, I'm opposed to how they're trying to make it. If you notice, they're trying to, there's a beautiful house that currently sits there. And to take that house and cram or corral 16 units is going to change the character, the feel of the neighborhood. And on top of that, there's going to be more traffic issues. Amor Road is used as a cut through. And even when I was coming down to make a right turn, you have people from Brush Hill, you have to deal with people on Truman Highway. And I can just imagine where they plan on putting the driveway. Sometimes you have to kind of like, you can't just drive out, you kind of have to crawl out. Now, where I usually crawl out, they're proposing a driveway and I can just imagine if other people are trying to come out, that's going to be terrible. Another thing is, I think it's going to really promote a lot of traffic on our street. And we have a lot of elderly people who have to really be careful backing out because cars come flying out of there. And also, it's taking away beautiful lush trees. You know, we have animals that come in and I'd rather enjoy the animals, but this is just taking, taking away the forest, what makes Milton look suburban and beautiful. Another thing I noticed, down at the bottom of Amor and Brush Hill, there tends to be a puddling of water, especially when it gets, the snow starts coming. And it comes from Amor and Brush Hill. Now, when you remove all those trees and dirt and grass, I, it's just going to be in that area. Down there, when it's really cold, you have to drive real slow because, especially in the wintertime, because that's when the crashes occur. I know because I live on this street, but you know, you can hear them smash, smash, smash at the end of the street. On top of that, there has been deaths on Brush Hill Road. So I think it's, the design is poor, it's too much. There's no frontage for, at the, there's no place for children to play. If they're going to make a 40B, why isn't there space for children? This is COVID time. Have we not learned that there should be space for children? There is, they're being crowded into space. And what amazed me was that there was a viewing last week and they limited the amount of people who could come and watch, I mean, do a site view. But you wanted to cram 16 families together, that's probably going to be 80 people in this corner. But yet, you guys think it's not safe for, to do a site visit because it's going to be too many people? There's no backyard. The only place those children are going to have to play is in the parking lot. And I think parking lots are dangerous. And that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Silva. Tim, you have control. Do you want to make me a co-host so I can help manage the speakers? Our next speaker is, okay, good. Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Galvin and you have been unmuted, Mr. Galvin. If you could please introduce yourself?
Good evening. Attorney Robert Galvin, representing members of the Brush Hill Neighborhood Association, Cushing Road Neighborhood Association. Is there a draft letter that could be displayed during the meeting that we could view? Or is it somewhere available online?
Yeah, Tim will pull it up on the screen while we're discussing it.
That was my only comment and I look forward to your comments to the Select Board. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board during Citizen Speak? We have one more. Person is marked as Lori. You can go right ahead if you could please introduce yourself with your name and address. Lori? No, okay. That is all we have for Citizen Speak. I'm just going to give it one more second. Anybody else like to address the Board? Oh, we have a couple more. This person is identified as Bisignano. If you could please introduce yourself?
Sure, it's Maureen Bisignano.
Thank you.
My husband Chuck Newman and I live at 939 Brush Hill Road, directly across the street from the 936 site. Our home was built in 1800 and we've lived in this neighborhood now for about 35 years. I want to strongly recommend that you disapprove of this 40B property proposal for all the reasons that everybody has so articulately discussed at prior meetings. The traffic, the, 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 no, we have no sidewalks. We have people walking up and down the street with their dogs and their kids all day long. The traffic is already incredible, even during this COVID time. And we are so fearful about what will happen to our neighborhood if that property is allowed to proceed as planned. So please, we're asking for you to consider Attorney Galvin's proposal and the voices of all of us at the 936 site. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, the next speaker is identified as Brown. You are unmuted.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Gina Brown. I live at 71 Amor Road in Milton. And I just wanted to reiterate what some of the other residents have said. It just, I think it's going to be a lot more traffic. I know that there is plans for not only speed bumps, but also sidewalks for this area that's supposed to be happening very soon. But I don't think that that's going to solve this issue of not only putting the condominiums on that corner, which again, will increase traffic. There's already been three deaths on Truman Parkway. So imagine that increase of traffic just from those two developments of 40B going on Brush Hill Road and on this corner. I was, I've drove around Milton and trying to find other areas that, where this could go. Like over Curry College, there's Dollar Lane, there's a huge pond there, plus there's Acres over there as well, that maybe they could consider putting it over there if they're looking for locations. And I just don't feel for young children that are coming up in the area, going to be moving in the area, especially to that condominium area, it's just not children-friendly. Again, the traffic does go very fast down our street. But the only thing that I could see as to solving maybe this issue, if for some reason it does come to Amor Road, is putting not only, you've already got the stop signs, but having a set of lights four ways from Truman Parkway, Amor Road, Brush Hill Road, just to stop traffic completely on all ends. And I really hope that you guys really consider not passing this, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lori McIntosh.
Hi, thank you. Sorry about the microphone issue just a few minutes ago. But now I'm, now I'm on my phone, so hopefully it'll be better. Anyway, I am Lori McIntosh of 77 Cushing Road. I'm President of the Cushing Road Neighborhood Association, a subset of the Brush Hill Road Neighborhood Association. And I just want to reiterate and focus on safety for 936 Brush Hill Road. People speed on Brush Hill. There will be no, there's no sidewalk there. The current, the current rendering shows no sidewalk. It is extremely dangerous, nowhere for children to go, except as the very first speaker mentioned, the parking lot. This is just not family-friendly, not even pedestrian-friendly. And with, as I mentioned at our last meeting, 380 more car trips a day. It is just not, it's not feasible. It's not so, it's a terrible design. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't see it. Oh, I see one other, one more hand that just popped up. Bjorn Olsen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So my name is Becky Simons. My husband is Bjorn Olsen and we live at 1053 Brush Hill Road in Milton and we've lived in our house, which was built in 1725. I think it's one of the oldest houses on the road. And we've lived here since 1997. We've seen development coming to our neighborhood in the form of dorms that Curry College built. Curry College, in the time that we've lived here, has also acquired two large mansions on Brush Hill Road that are kind of in our immediate neighborhood and incorporated them into their campus. We have seen the development of Woodmere, which is the 35 or 37 townhouse units on the nine-acre parcel of land that was purchased by, was it North, Northern? I forget with the development company, Northern something, from the Boston Archdiocese. So we had, you know, our, you know, a pretty robust share of development. My reason for bringing that up is I feel like that development has been tasteful. We've worked hard with Curry College. We've actually taught and continue to teach Curry College how to be good neighbors in terms of involving us in these building projects. And listening to our feedback, they, in the last project with a new dorm, they really took a lot of things that we asked for. You know, we didn't want to have like a white roof on a lower part of the dorm in terms of what people were going to see out of their bedroom, living room, home, you know, the residential home windows. We talk about blacktop. We, anyway, we've really discussed with Curry, you know, and have had the opportunity to share our opinions. And they've listened, listened to us and given us, changed some things in their designs. This project, I cannot tell you how deeply concerned I am about it and how much in opposition I am to it. Brush Hill Road is a scenic, narrow, windy, hilly road in places. As, as said prior to me speaking, there are no sidewalks. It is outright treacherous and dangerous. I have a dog. I walk almost daily. The cars come speeding by. There's kind of blind corners. It's, it's no, it's not a good, my goal is always to get off the road with my dog as fast as I can to a side street or a private lane. Dangerous to bike, you know, I have a son who I raised in my house. I did not teach him how to ride a bike on Brush Hill Road. That would be a big no-no. It's just, it's, and as someone else pointed out, there's lots of speeding that occurs on this road. Cars do not go the speed limit at all. Back to the project though, putting a project like that at 936, which is the two buildings with a 35 parking, parking lot for 35 cars, the large retaining walls, the size of the building towering over the neighboring homes. It's just so, so ill-fought-out and so unconscionable. If you want to ruin a neighborhood, if you want to see for sale signs go up, if you want to see property values, you know, drop. If you just, just want to ruin, ruin part of Milton, that's what will happen if this project goes through. So I really, really implore everybody and anybody to not allow it to happen. And I too think that safety is a huge concern and putting people onto that, that less than an acre lot and that kind of density, near no amenities, near no public transportation is just crazy. That's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have two more speakers. Vesper Gibbs-Barnes is next.
Good evening. Vesper Gibbs-Barnes, we are, I live at 20, you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, 27 Amor Road. And I concur with everything that everyone said about both projects, particularly about 60 Amor Road because it's diagonally directly across the street from me. There's a lot of very beautiful lush historic trees on that property and on the property next to hers that are directly in front of my house, basically. That would be a major loss to the beauty of the neighborhood. But we've already sent in extensive comments about safety and everyone has really hit on that point. The question I had, I don't know if this is the correct committee to talk to. There's talk about putting in sidewalks on Amor Road and I called around the town about it and no one seemed to know anything about it. Is your committee the correct committee to address that? Because most of the, all the homes on Brush, on Amor Road have, a lot of them have sprinkler systems that come directly to the edge of the property. And so I'm not sure, and the street's already narrow, so I don't think the sidewalks are going to make the street further narrow, but potentially expanding to our lawns, which I have an issue with, especially that it would damage my sprinkler system and everybody else's sprinkler system. And we have no notice of this and no opportunity to comment.
So is that the end of your comments?
Yes.
That would be a question, unless Tim has any knowledge of this, that would really be a question for the Department of Public Works. I am not aware of their plans for adding sidewalks. It could be, I don't know. But I think the best place to find that information would be calling Department of Public Works. And Tim, do you have anything to add?
I haven't heard about any plans to put in sidewalks, although I might not be in the loop on that. So Public Works is the place to go for that.
Well, I actually spoke to a gentleman by the name of Chase. I don't know what his full name is. I called and spoke with him and he said he didn't know anything about it either.
So Chase is the Director of Public Works, so if he says no, then it's no. So.
For now.
I think that would be, if that was a project that the, that the town was pursuing, it would be at Chase's behest. So if he's, suggests that those plans are underway. Okay, thank you very much for your comments and we- Okay, thank you very much for your comments. And we have another person identified as C Newman. And you are now unmuted. If you could introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Charles Newman. I live at 939 Brush Hill. My wife, Maureen Visagnano, addressed this group a few minutes ago. First of all, we'd like to thank you all for all the hard work that you guys do on our behalf. It's probably one of those tasks which can't be thanked enough. But on the other hand, I have to voice some concern over the fact that the, Milton not having a 40B plan or whatever you refer to it as, now allows developers to come in without regards to any local zoning or any input and can put down a highly dense 20-unit apartment housing on a 0.9 acre of land. That is, I think the planning, part of the, many of the members of the Planning Commission saw the site last week, saw us across the street watching you, being orientated by the developers. You know how the slope of the land is and what the height of those buildings would be, both to the abutting house and of course, our house directly across the street. We're not opposed to 40B by any stretch of the imagination, but to have such a high density apartment complex located on a residential street with beautiful homes distresses us to no end. So we just wanted to go on record to voice our opposition to it and would ask if there's any comments from you folks with regards to the absence of this plan, which allows this kind of developer, development to occur.
Thank you very much. I'm glad that you did take the opportunity to share your thoughts. And I think that is the perfect segue for us to move off citizen speak and into a new business, or old business, excuse me, discussion of 40B comment letters, 16 Amor Road and 936 Brush Hill Road. So just to address the last comment from Mr. Newman, and I've seen this in a couple of the comment letters that we've received. It's important to note that the Planning Board has received an abundance of letters and all of the members and the staff have reviewed them and thought about them quite a bit. We've also received phone calls and the correspondence. So thank you very much to the residents who have continued to engage. It's very important to our process. I've seen a comment a couple of times about there being a lack of a 40B plan. And I just want to make sure that folks in the public know that this is, I don't believe, true. There is no actual thing called a 40B plan that we have devised, although there's a lot of, a number of different things that we've been working on for many years that would get to the point of coming together to a 40B plan. The challenge for us is that since I think the 60s, every city and town in Massachusetts has been required to provide a deed restriction on 10% of their total housing stock. So that is affordable units. And that is counted by the state on the state house, at the subsidized housing inventory, also known as the SHI. It's adjusted every 10 years with every census. And Milton is somewhere around 5% at this point, where we have been for, I don't know, maybe Tim, you know the history of it, but probably 40 years. We have been working diligently to add units, particularly over the last three years where we can. We didn't have a lot of tools in our toolbox to do that. So we've been working on zoning amendments. We've been working on taking payment from developers that don't trigger an affordable unit. Payments in lieu of creating that unit. We have cluster zoning bylaw that was passed several years ago that allows, you know, we passed, approved one of those projects and we, for the very first time, took a payment in lieu of creating a unit because they did not trigger that requirement. We have been working on a number of different policies. We've been working on, you know, poking and prodding where we can to create as many units as we possibly could. We've been working on maintaining the units that we currently have counted on the subsidized housing inventory, which in some cases do expire. So our staff have been working very hard to make sure that all of the units that we have on that inventory to date do not expire so that we don't go down and we only keep going up. So I, I hope that you will take that into account and know that we've been working very hard to try to get to this point. But the reality is, in order to get to 10%, we have to create somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 units. I think it's 486 units. And it's very, very challenging to do that. And it's unlike Milton where we don't want to see a whole bunch of dense development. So we're trying to put all these pieces together in a way that makes sense so that we can hopefully get to a place where we can achieve a stay, which is if you create, you have to have a housing production plan, which we do have in place and we updated in the last couple of years, which is really step one. Then if we can produce a certain number of units in a year, then we can get a stay. So no new 40Bs can be filed. And we are going to try to, you know, pace all these things together between the policy changes and the new units that we're adding and the payments that we're accepting from projects that don't trigger the new units. And hopefully achieving the development of some units that we can achieve the stay. Over time, that's going to come to create a plan. And it's all, you know, different pressure points that we have to move unless somebody wants to have a 500 unit project in their backyard, which I don't think anybody in Milton does. So we're working very, very hard, even though people may not realize it. And we have been for a number of years and it unfortunately takes time. But with that, we are very, very sympathetic to all the neighborhoods that have a 40B pending. And there are seven projects pending now and we're heartbroken about them. So I don't want anyone in the public to think that we're not listening or we don't care or that we're tuning out. We're doing everything we possibly can to help you and to advocate for you. And where there's an opportunity to weigh in, we are taking that. And that's the next thing on our agenda, which is use comment letters, which are part of the site eligibility process for these two new projects. So with that, I think, Tim, if you could pull up, let's start with 16 Amor Road. If you could pull up on the screen, a draft letter. I think it would be helpful for people to be able to see it and then we can walk through it and get comment from the board. Kathleen O'Donnell is our resident 40B expert. She's a land use attorney. She has represented Milton and on this very topic, on other projects. She represents a number of towns on this topic. So she was kind enough to offer the first round here of the draft letter. Kathleen, I don't know if you want to walk through this, but I think, you know, having your expertise here is very helpful because you know what Mass Housing is looking at and what they are most concerned with when they're making these types of decisions. So maybe you can talk us through that a little bit.
Well, I would just like to remind everyone of what, where this is in the process. Reminding people that while we appreciate all the comments that have come to us, the Planning Board is not the decider on these projects, on these applications. These are not permits that come before the Planning Board. So all we can do at this point is provide our comments to the Select Board, which will then respond to Mass Housing. So this whole process starts because a developer has to get a site eligibility letter from Massachusetts Housing before they can apply to the zoning board for a comprehensive permit. So what we are dealing with now is the Mass Housing has sent a letter to the town through the Select Board saying, hi, we have this application. Here it is. Take a look at it. And everybody should know that it's on the town's website. You can all read it. And we want to have the town's comments on this application. And so Tim is assembling comments from all other sorts of boards and commissions in the town. And this, what we're working on tonight is the letter that the Planning Board will be sending to the Select Board about the issues that the Planning Board has identified with this project. There may be letters that come in from the Historic Commission, the Conservation Commission, you know, the Traffic and Safety Committee, all kinds of people and organizations in the town would respond to the Select Board. The Select Board then will take everything that everybody has said and put it into a letter to Mass Housing. So that's sort of where we are. And so this letter is really just sort of drafted with the view of what does the Planning Board, having done its site visit and addressing the comment that somebody made, the reason why the numbers of people were limited and the site visits wasn't because of the crowdedness that might have happened, but because of COVID requirements. So when we did site visits for the other two applications on Brush Hill Road and on Canton Ave, that was pre-COVID and everybody could be there and there was, you know, a big group on both of those sites. But this, this time, especially with tenants in the Brush Hill Road, which I think is now is a group home, we had to be very careful about the number of people on the site. So it wasn't a traffic issue. It was really a COVID safety issue. So I drafted this letter, as I said, with, for everybody to take a look at, just to sort of as a first draft, very much a first draft, not instrument at all, but just sort of looking at it from the issues that come before the Planning Board. What kinds of things do we look at as a board? And so that's how this letter is sort of crafted. Expecting that other boards and commissions in the town will be submitting their own comments, I really sort of looked at what, what would the Planning Board be looking at if this came before us? And that really is just looking at the site, whether it's appropriate, what the design looks like, you know, those kinds of things. So that's sort of an introduction to the, the tone of the letter.
Okay. Do we want to walk through this line by line?
Well, I know that Cheryl had made some comments too, that she had sent along. And she had suggested that, well, sort of a grammar change. And then when, it was really sort of odd, I have to say. I mean, I'm not an architect, obviously, but when we did the site visit, we were talking to the architects and, and we kind of said, you know, why are you like blasting everything out of here, regrading it, you know, reducing, you know, taking every tree out, all the rest of the sort of stuff. You've got four driveways on Amor Road. Why are you doing that? That's just nuts. And the architect looked at it a little and sort of said, well, you know, you're probably right about that. Maybe we should rethink that. Just maybe have one driveway on Amor. And it was one of those questions, one of those moments where you sort of said to yourself, why didn't you do a better design before you submitted all this stuff to Mass Housing? If there are things that you're already agreeing that you probably would do, why don't you do them first? Before you sort of waste everybody's time. But, so I think the, Cheryl had some good comments about putting in the kinds of things that they sort of agreed to, well, it was just the architect, sort of agreed to look at for both of these projects as a result of the site visit that we had. Isn't that right, Cheryl?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, my sense, Kathleen, from your comment and, and my similar conversations with them on the site walk was that if, if I were a betting person, I would bet that they hadn't spent much time on the site before they generated the site plan and the, that they produced for the application. It's either, it's either that or they looked at it as a paper exercise only, like we've talked about before. You know, you don't look at what's there. You don't look at the trees. You don't look at the topography. You don't look at where the neighbors are. And so when I pointed out these things on site, the architect did agree. And the Tamposis, you know, may or may not agree with their architect when they get back and discuss it together. But I do think that the site plan, as all of the neighbors have, have said, is, is trying to put too much onto a, on this size parcel. And it's not the only way to design this. This is something I've talked about a lot before. But even so, the, the design suggestions that I make are for a rethought site plan. But I still agree, and I think we have in the letter, in your language, Kathleen, that it's still, we still believe it's not the right kind of density for this site.
Oh, yeah, right.
But in, in looking at the site, we do want them to look at these, these aspects of the site that are particular, you know, to Amor Road and Brush Hill Road have similar characteristics, but they're not exactly the same. And so I, I do think we should tailor them a little bit to those conditions. And that's what my comments reflected.
So we have, I'd love to hear from Denny and Rich if they have more things to say more generally, but we have an obligation to finalize this letter tonight because it's due to the Select Board tomorrow.
Yes.
So I think we should walk through. I, I think there was one adjustment that you had suggested earlier on in this letter, Cheryl, which we.
Yeah, I just thought adoption is better than creation, but because we created it three years ago, but we actually did adopt it. And that's an important distinction.
Well, I have, I'm saving time by having this, by sitting in my office with the letter in front of me on the computer. So I've already changed creation to adoption. And so considering this, the deadlines that we have, I thought, well, I'll just sit here in this trashy office and make the changes as we talk about it.
Do we want to have Kathleen share screen then instead? Do you want to do that, Kathleen?
I don't know how to do that and I'm on a different computer.
Okay. Denny, did you want to?
Yeah, sure. So I read something like 25 letters from all the neighbors and citizens that wrote in and I just wanted to thank all of them. And then I wanted to apologize to Kathleen because by the time I looked at Kathleen's letters, they look wonderful, but my eyes were crossing and I can't tell if, if the points that I picked up from the neighbors on my site walk and from all the letters. So if I, I'm sure Kathleen knows her letter better than I did. But I was wondering if we should mention the fatalities near the site. It, it has come up quite a bit.
I believe I did.
Okay.
Yes, in the second page, third paragraph.
Yes, some of them fatal. Perfect. Okay, so check. We got that. And then some of the neighbors told me about a safety matter of an icy area on the road near the proposed site. I don't know if you knew of that. I don't know. And the other, the other matter that I learned from the neighbors after my site walk was that there is an area right near the site and they pile snow there. So with the way they are building these structures, there's no place for snow and there's no extra place for them to move it off-site because they are at complete capacity. So that's a cost for the developer. And I mention that only because they go through, I know that the part of getting this round of approvals involves costs. And I, I think that's actually going to end up being a cost for the developer or, or the property management down the road.
I'm trying to think, well, I mean, obviously a lot of this stuff comes up in the, before the zoning board. You know, they're going to have to submit, you know, all kinds of plans and stuff like that for.
I do think during the project eligibility though, this, this is a financial issue because they're, they're either going to have to create on-site a place to store snow and they don't have anything like that, which could cut into their bottom line because it could mean less density.
Denny, just, just so you're aware, I, I have a letter from the Department of Public Works and the Engineering Department that bring up the issue that there won't be any town snow removal from the site. So that's something that the site will be responsible for. And that's, that'll be in my drafts of the Select Board's letter. So if the Planning Board wants to mention it, that's fine, but DPW has covered that and I'm going to make sure that that's in the, the eventual letter that the Select Board considers.
Okay.
I can, I mean, I can, we have, I've already talked, I've talked about the fact that there's no open space. There's nothing for kids and I can certainly add, you know, a line in here.
No place for snow storage.
Yeah, well, you know, it's sort of, it says, as, as many people have pointed out. I mean, the whole thing is, you know, covered. It's just amazing. So.
In that same vein, there's, there's no parking or standing area for a school bus stop.
Oh, well, we had that issue with Randolph Ave. Let me tell you, that didn't, you know, went over like a lead balloon.
But you never know because they changed over. Like you said, since Milton used, they have changed over. They might appeal to new members there. I mean, the children, people have to care about the children. At least I tell myself that, Kathleen.
Well, I mean, I can certainly, you know, right, and so on page two, we sort of talk about the, you know, the fact that it's a less than an acre in a single family district. And the applicant states the wrong road and puts it like near urban edge of Boston, et cetera, et cetera. And so when we have this design, we talk about the design criteria that Mass Housing is supposed to do. And so um, when we have this design, we talk about the design criteria that mass housing is supposed to do. And then I go into the fact that it sits at a dangerous intersection. Um, and so we could add another paragraph in there. Um, that just talks about, as you've said, the um, the fact that the the site, that the site coverage um, is is so intense that there isn't, you know, there was once again, no open space, there's no place for snow storage, you know, there's no place for.
Play area or a school bus stop or or place for kids to wait for the bus.
Yeah. Okay.
Um. And you had mentioned grading issues and that that really stood out to me. And so I was wondering if Cheryl was going to be doing the those kind of visuals again.
That's actually more of an issue with the Brush Hill Road one than it is with Amher.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it is a bit on a hill, but um, and and thank you Kathleen, by the way, I thought your letter was excellent. Um. Okay, alright, I I guess I'll I'll step aside and let my other um, planning board members speak.
Cheryl, did you want to talk through your comments?
Sure, yeah, so um, I mentioned the the um, changing the words, the creation of the uh, Milton Village mixed use to adoption of. Then the next place, I'm not quite sure where we put it, but maybe it's here Kathleen, um, where that paragraph begins with during our site visit. And my suggestion was adding language that would require the applicant and redesigning the site to provide a greater setback from the northerly abutter, preserving the existing trees, or at least some of the existing trees as a buffer. The architect did agree with me uh, on that on-site. Um, and then similar to that is adding language requiring the applicant and redesigning the site to provide parking within the proposed structures, thereby increasing pervious area and open space. And I thought what that is, is that uh, townhouses oftentimes have parking on the first floor. And then um, the, they could raise these up and still be within the thirty-five-foot single-family uh, height limit that we that we have across um, these districts. Uh, and then with doing that, they could um, radically or greatly reduce the amount of paved area, which is the pervious area, impervious area rather, and then that would would give them an area to provide more open space.
So I think, I'm trying to call up the letter to see if I can screen share it. Um, but I don't know whether I can screen.
Kathleen, so if in your Zoom, I I unshared the screen, so hopefully your thing came up. Is there, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, is there a green share screen arrow?
Yeah, that's what I just hit, yeah.
You have to pick, you, sometimes you have to pick, if you have more than one um, application open, you may have to pick which one you want to share.
Um. I'm sharing my screen.
Screen broadcast.
Um, I don't know. Hmm, guess not. I don't know, I don't know, so share screen, share, duh-duh, that's not it. Sorry, I just thought it would be easier to do it if, if it was uh, um. I keep hitting the wrong button. Yeah. I just, I guess I don't know where it's hiding, maybe it's at uh, on Microsoft OneDrive?
The document?
Yeah.
It is on the OneDrive.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's going to be asking me to sign in everything else, that's just annoying, sorry, forget it.
So Kathleen, if you could, or um, Tim, actually, can you put the language back up again?
Sorry, Tim.
Alright, so um, so right after that first sentence. Um, and I think I would like these things also to be conditioned in the eligibility letter, if they grant one. Is is that that um, in redesigning the site, the applicant shall provide a greater setback from the northerly abutter, preserving as many existing trees as a buffer as reasonable, or something like to that effect.
So here's the, okay, so we have this paragraph that says during our site visit, they indicated a willingness to reduce the number of driveways, la 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 la. And so in that paragraph, that's probably where we should put in.
They also, yeah, so they also include um, indicated a willingness to provide a greater setback from the northerly abutter, preserving existing trees as a buffer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other thing, additionally, a willingness to investigate providing parking within the proposed structures, thereby increasing pervious area and open space.
Okay, so if I do, during our site visit, the applicants' architects indicated a willingness to reduce the number of driveways on Amher Road and adjust circulation through the project site. Um, uh, they also um, agreed to maintain the tree lines on, trees on the trees on the um, easterly property line um, for screening for the abutter.
I thought that you also had said in an email that they agreed to um, keep trees on uh, Truman Parkway.
I don't think they agreed to, we talked about it, um, I talked about it with the architect because I, because I wanted to put in, um, I did put in, in the number two, in the second bullet, that they should be preserving the wooded appearance of the corner so that they screen the buildings and the lighting from the conservation land along the Napa River. That's already in here.
Okay, um, are you sure that's the easterly or is that, or the northerly?
Well.
I'm going to pull up the plan quickly. You're correct, it's easterly.
I used to live on Brush Hill Road, so.
Very good.
I could visualize it. Um.
Yeah, so then I uh, had suggested also about uh, they agreed to at least um, investigate providing parking within the proposed structures.
Mm-hmm.
Which would allow them to uh, increase the pervious area and open space.
Okay.
And another thing that I noted was that uh, considering that this applicant has four projects they've applied for, this is the only one that has proposed single-family and townhouse. The others have been apartment buildings and monster-sized apartment buildings. Um, and so I'm suggesting that we have some language that says that generally speaking, single-family and townhouse are more suitable for multi-family development in Milton than um, or just leave it at that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I like that a lot, that's a great comment. Especially in the site.
Yeah. Um, Cheryl, I I wanted to mention that I agree with you on the idea of putting a parking underneath. I think that would create possibly more open space and definitely less impervious surface. Um, and that did come up when I got to the site walk, just, I think just after you had left. Um, and then I had um, told them I also like the idea of one entry on Amher Street, that does sound much better. Um, and they they did seem receptive to both when I was talking to them. So um, so I guess we tag-team them without even knowing it.
We did, yeah, and uh, we hadn't talked to one another about it in advance, right?
No, we kind of passed each other, but we think alike on trees and um, a few other things.
Well, and
Well, yeah, I mean, I sort of said to them, I don't understand why you're not looking at a more sort of a cottage design where the houses face the street and all the service stuff and everything is behind. It's that's done, you know, in all kinds of other, you know, states and and areas and it and it would avoid this stupid four driveways right on Amher Road within an inch of each other, I mean, that's just a mess. Um.
And it's also hard because it's so close to the road, you know, the setbacks are just so awful on all of these fortyBs, they're just killing me.
Yeah.
So one other thing Kathleen, can you scroll down to where you, or Tim, can you scroll around, scroll down to uh, right there, that yellow? Um, I I made a note about um, about what we want to call out here, um, you know, promoting clean energy or sustainable resources. I guess to the extent that that's required by mass housing um, or DHCD, um, I'd have to look into what they actually require, but as far as what Milton requires, um, we don't have it in our zoning, Boston does have sustainable requirements in their zoning. What we have in our building code is called the stretch code and that is an energy, um, it's the energy um, efficiency or energy requirements of our building code. And it is more stringent than the um, underlying or base building code. Um, but my understanding is that they would not be giving any waivers on the building code just because it's a fortyB project. Um, and so I think we could encourage them to consider zero net carbon or net zero energy. But we don't currently have any requirements for that in our in our zoning.
Okay.
Make sure we kind of under, everybody understood that. And then uh, something I've talked about also um, is the green infrastructure, which I think is something we would like to um, work with the DPW on, um, which could help us address this pervious, impervious sort of uh, question that keeps coming up. Um, and then lastly, in in terms of sustainability, uh, the US Green Building Council has their Leadership and Energy Design certifications, and they do have them for neighborhoods, they have them for individual buildings. And again, Boston has a requirement in its zoning, different level, different certification levels, which is um, different degrees of um, achieving efficiency. And it's not just energy efficiency with respect to the the lead, there's many other components to it. Um, so I'm happy to sort of help with some language here if we're clear about what we want to include.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, the other two projects that they proposed um, that for with us, we already had on those site eligibility letters, had nothing in there about any kind of, you know, lead or any, nothing, all they were doing was providing Energy Star appliances. Um, which is not surprising with a company that's famous for building golf courses and not actually residences, so um, you know, I don't think they've given it any thought at all.
Well, there's definitely, you know, the, what you've got in terms of the uh, the only part I'm responding to is where mil- subdivisions in Milton are required to be dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
But then the the the, sort of the next part is we don't actually have requirements for the other things.
Okay.
Um, and we could refer to the state because the state is, you know, encouraging. And I can get to the language for what the state is encouraging. Um, but I I don't have it at my fingertips tonight, if you want to get this done tonight, I can do do some Googling to get the state language right now while we're at the meeting, if you want.
So we would just say subdivisions, I mean, are there, aren't our subdivisions required to be dark sky compliant? I thought they were.
We put it in our decisions, but I don't know if it's in the zoning actually.
I don't think it is, no.
Okay, so we just say, well, we can say it, that the planning board, instead of subdivisions, we just say the planning board requires subdivisions to be dark sky compliant.
We can do that, yeah.
That's true.
And we can say that we encourage compliance with the US Green Building Council's lead certification system.
Yeah.
And you know, um, we don't have to say, I mean, we could put at a certifiable level minimum because that's what the minimum level would be, is that it's certifiable. And I don't need to go into all the details about this rating system, I'm sure for you folks.
Yeah, so if we just say, so, and so in that bullet, if we just say this, the planning board requires subdivisions to be dark sky compliant and we encourage developers to, what did you want to say, what was the word, developers to.
Meet, to meet US Green Building Council Lead Certification.
Yeah.
And we don't even have to put the level in there.
Yeah.
We could finish that off, that sentence off to say to exceed the stretch energy requirements of the town of Milton.
Yeah, because if if you exceed the stretch code requirements, then you're getting closer to net zero.
Right.
And probably getting closer to lead gold or platinum.
But I do think it's important to kind of remind them that we have, we have adopted the stretch code.
Yeah, yeah, I think you could put that in, it's just it's a building code, they have no way out of that as far as I understand.
No, yeah, fortyB is not exempt, no.
Yeah.
Well, you might as well put it in, so I've got that sentence to read now, the planning board requires subdivisions to be dark sky compliant and we encourage developers to meet US GBC lead certification so as to exceed the stretch code requirements of the town's building code.
Excellent.
Okay. Alright. And then in the last paragraph is where we could put in, we recognize the need for affordable housing and doing what we can, blah blah blah, deeply concerned about the, and while um, while we believe that the single-family and townhouse designs are appropriate in the town. Um, we are deeply concerned about the density on this site, which far exceeds, so we just, so we can throw in the fact that we think it's a nice, you know, it's not, it's not a, you know, ten, twenty, twenty-story, you know, apartment complex, um. And um, and we, so we can throw that in there, but we just want to say it's just too dense for what's, you know, appropriate for this site.
I think that, the the last paragraph, the first sentence, is that supposed to say to encourage construction on sites close to transit?
Um, yes.
Okay. I like what you just proposed, I think that's good.
Um, I've added a sentence about requiring space for snow storage. Um, and Denny, what, um?
Yeah, so it was snow storage, it was a play area, uh, standing area for a school bus stop.
And a um, drop off. Pick up. Or school buses, school children. Okay.
Thank you.
Cheryl, is that the end of your comment?
Yes.
Um, Rich, did you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, no, I um, yeah, just a couple things, nothing to add to it, I
I, Kathleen, I think you did a great job, and I love all these additions. The only thing I did want to say is I also wanted to acknowledge all the residents, the letters that we got and all the comments tonight and previous nights. I, I just encourage folks to keep doing that. As April mentioned, you know, we've got a lot of these in front of us and actually, you know, I'm sure that not, none of us on this caller shielded from these things. They're in every neighborhood, and so the more folks, the better. And I think, you know, the comments are welcome. And the folks like Kathleen and Cheryl and April that put this together, I think it's fantastic. I don't have anything more to add to it. I think you covered all the spots. Denny, your, your, your last comments are right on. So anything we can do to kind of push back? You know, I have, I'm sure I can keep going and just reiterate things that have already been said. But, um, you know, I think it is unfortunate what we've got in front of us, so this is all we can do.
Thanks, Rich. Um, Denny, just one moment, if you don't mind. Did you, when you spoke with the DPW, did they do an assessment of the public infrastructure impacts of the project? Tim?
I thought, I thought you were talking to Denny, I'm sorry.
You said Denny.
Tim, I meant Tim. Did the DPW do an assessment of the public infrastructure impacts? And if they did, do you know what their summary was?
Um, they, um, on, on, on Amor Road, they have, um, they had a comment about, I think, I think, I think the water is, is fine. But I think they had a comment about using one pipe as opposed to two pipes, which I think they're proposing, one pipe going into the townhouses and another pipe going into the, um, single family houses. But they did, they did request an assessment, basically affirming that the, um, that the sewer infrastructure was sufficient. Um, I think there's also an issue with, um, and, and you'll have to forgive me, I forget if it was the water or the sewer pipes. But one of them goes out to Brush Hill Road, which is DCR jurisdiction. So there's, um, there's an issue there with just making sure that, you know, whoever has sign off on that has sign off. But I think in, in, in any, in, in both cases, DPW has, has requested sort of affirmation that the infrastructure is, is sufficient, which I think is appropriate.
Yeah. So just my comments overall, and Kathleen, as always, you did a nice job. And Cheryl, you always provide great additional detail. I think everybody has weighed in. And I think everything that we've heard from the neighborhood is incorporated here. I mean, I, the comments that speak to me are the density, the traffic concerns. I don't know so much about the, um, traffic volume because I don't have any of that data, but certainly the traffic safety. I think the ins and outs of the site, as we've already discussed, are very hazardous and challenging and disruptive to the neighborhood. And I think, um, the, you know, the density and the set lock coverage is just obscene. So I think everything is covered there that I would have pulled out. But I just want to say thank you very much, especially to Kathleen for taking the first stab at that, which is always the hardest. Are there, Denny, did you have another follow up that you wanted to?
Yeah, um, I thought you had made a really good point last time, April, about the, you know, the spirit of 40B is, you know, revitalizing, you know, like an old mill building or something where there's infrastructure already there. I didn't know if that would apply to this letter or
No, that's actually not a consideration in 40B, unfortunately. It is in 40R. 40R, yes. 40B, not so much.
Okay.
I looked at that because we were talking about the Sustainable Development Principles, and those are grounded in the idea of starting with redevelopment where there's already existing infrastructure as opposed to going out into, you know, places where, that are green and plowing down trees to put something up. So I looked into that to see if that would be a compelling argument because it's just the spirit of what I think good planning is.
Well, you know, 40B doesn't care about that, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, we all agree with you. We certainly agree with you. The only other thing I thought of, we were talking about access and, um, the fire truck, uh, fire trucks either need to be able to drive through or turn around. So that, that might make it difficult.
That should be coming from the fire department, not from, not from us.
Okay.
But, I mean, Tim, did they, did the fire department provide comments, you know?
They, 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 they did. I don't know if they commented on the ability of their apparatus to, to get in and out. I can double check on that. That's also something that, um, there are considerations that Mass Housing looks for in terms of the conceptual site design. But if there is, i- if they do get this approval and they do move on to an actual 40B application, there'll be more detailed engineering and, and site drawings involved in that application that, um, that's kind of where those comments tend to be heard a little bit more. But I'll, I'll double check with the fire department about that.
Okay. Because I, I just wanted to be sure that our letter was working with the fire department. In other words, if the only way that the fire department would feel good is if they had access on Brush Hill, I didn't necessarily want our letter to be in conflict with their letter. But I don't know.
It's, it's, I mean, if this is just the site eligibility stage, I mean, all of that, you know, gets hammered out. We had that issue with the Hendry's plant because the fact the building was so close to the, you know, to the, to the, to the Matapan line. You know, and where was, how was fire apparatus supposed to be getting to the rear, you know, side of the, of that, um, building? And, um, and that was, you know, an issue that was before the zoning board, so.
There's no, there's no real wetlands around the site. Is there any wetlands?
Nope.
Pretty high up, I thought, so, okay.
Yeah, no, we look for, you know, we sort of look for that because they'd have to comply with state con, you know, wetlands. But there isn't, you know, unlike the other sites, um, we didn't have these kinds of environmental, you know, the obvious environmental concern.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, it sounds like you guys thought of everything. Thank you.
Well, I don't think so. We thought, tried to think of enough. I'm sure there's something.
I think that it incorporates all of the comments that, that we've received and that we have ourselves and
So I just made those changes and I highlighted them in yellow and I sent them to Tim.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Um, so we, do we want to take a look at them? Tim, do you have them in your inbox or is that asking too much?
Do you want to move on tonight? Do you want to go back? I mean, I can do this and open it up and
I, I want to take a vote to advance the letter to the, um, select board. So I guess I'll let the members decide if we need to see them.
Okay, I haven't gotten it from Kathleen yet, it hasn't come in, so.
So what, what we should do then is we can take a vote. And perhaps the condition that we call Tim before 10:00 AM tomorrow morning or something. Does that work for everybody?
Well, let me just see why he hasn't gotten it.
The internet is tired.
About if we talk about 9/36 and see if it comes in by the time we're done with that, April?
Okay, let's do that, all right. You want to pull up 9/36, Tim? That same change of creation to adoption and number five.
Right.
And just for the, for the members of the public that are watching this, just as a reminder, this is the planning board letter. So we're looking at things relative to site design and other things within our discipline. Every other agency of the town or department of the town is doing the same from their own discipline. So the Board of Selectmen will have a wealth of expertise to draw from. We are trying to be as comprehensive as we can be in our comments, but, um, there will be other folks weighing in on the select board's letter, and they will ultimately be the entity that will be contacting Mass Housing to express the town's concerns. So if you don't see something that is incorporated here that you wish to bring to the select board's attention, please continue to do so.
I think I just saw my email on Tim's screen, so.
So, um, I had similar comments for this one. And it might be that it is easterly rather than northerly, a butter, again.
Let me think.
And may have missed it. I can look up the site plan if you'd like, Kathleen.
I got it right here. So easterly, um, no, it's nor-, it's northerly on this one.
I got that one correct, okay, thank you. And I think, um, maybe we can go to the language where we talk about the topography. Tim, I don't know if you can find that here, I know she does talk about that, where is it? There it is, right there. So that during our site visit, the applicant architects indicated a willingness to break up the buildings in a way to reduce the massive amount of regrading in their preliminary design. So we also had asked them at the same time to, to look at incorporating, incorporating parking within the building because they've got a large retaining wall of, um, retaining walls and such a topographic change. It's one of the things where it's well-suited to incorporate parking within the building because you, you can bury most of it. And then you don't have to have, um, surface parking lots. Which again, gives you, I mean, again, they could redesign it to have a different kind of building type, too. But in any case, that they should have a greater setback and so that they can preserve existing trees because they have retaining walls that require removal of trees along that northerly property line. So I think that's the paragraph to edit.
Yeah, so I've added a sentence that says the planning board believes that the topography of the site supports the placement of parking under the buildings.
Okay. And then you could say allowing a greater buffer and preservation of existing trees at the northerly property line. Okay. And then I, I think it's worth noting that this would allow for an increased impervious area and open space because these are the things that are are concerned.
Would also increase or reduce the, um, amount of impervious surface and provide more open space.
I did. Go ahead.
And then I think, then we also should be talking about the setback. I mean, the idea that you're going to plant this tall building right in that road, you know, with a couple of walls.
Well, you can get, again, by parking underneath, you're not, the parking lots are restricting what they do with their site plan. So
Yeah.
Another result of putting it underneath is that it could increase the setback from the street. So it's like, it's not just a pervious area and open space, but it's also a setback.
And then would that help with that seven-foot retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hate that, the moat, that's awful. It's driving by a prison. It's like, what are we doing?
Well, I was just sort of, seriously, I was like, does your, you know, does your engineer have, you know, stock and cement block company? I mean, seriously, the number of retaining walls is insane.
I, I consider the, well, I think it's sort of, um, expediency to these plans in terms of not a lot of consideration and thought into, into how to integrate these developments into these existing sites. But, you know, you, you, you throw it on there, what fits in a piece of paper, and then the engineer says, okay, I'm going to need a bunch of retaining walls to make the grades work, and that's when they slap at us. And it's not, it's not good design work. The same comment on the energy part, Kathleen? So I think we could just take that, it's the very same language.
Yep. Okay.
And I didn't see that you made a note that Brush Hill Road is a scenic road with no sidewalks.
Um, I didn't, um, no, I wasn't, I was worried about whether Brush Hill Road was actually designated as a scenic road.
I know part of it is, I don't know if that part is.
Okay.
I think that part might be. How, maybe I could look it up, hold on. I'll look it up while you're working on that.
So that was my question, too, that last, um, sentence of the Transportation Choice Bullet.
Yeah.
Site does not have access to sidewalks or bike paths, and I would maybe
And put it in there, yeah.
Yeah, the site is located on a narrow, winding road.
Yeah.
Not have access to sidewalks or bike paths and presents a safety hazard.
Yeah.
And you might add the word historic to narrow, winding, historic, narrow, winding.
Okay.
Because that is, I mean, that is a trek or a stretch.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, the whole road, yeah.
Right, yeah.
As somebody who's written on that. Okay. So in, where, in this, in the paragraph on, oh, yeah, the third bullet in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
See that last sentence?
Yeah. Narrow, winding road. Okay. So the site's located on a narrow, winding road, portions of which are designated as a scenic road. I don't have to say whether this particular part is, but some of it is. Several of the houses near the project are, shouldn't we, shouldn't we say something about the fact that they're, you know, the, these people of the butters have pointed out their houses are over 200 years old?
Yeah.
So in looking at this now, where it says, um, the bullet point, uh, just above the one for transportation choice.
Yeah.
Where it says the plans submitted by the applicant indicate the entire site will be leveled. Maybe that should say will be regraded such that retaining walls are, extensive use of retaining walls are required, or something like that, because it's not just creating a level site, it's requiring all those retaining walls.
So we would just say, um, uh, instead of leveled, the, indicate the entire site will be, um,
Regraded.
Regraded.
Such. Regraded such that extensive use of retaining walls is required.
Okay.
Near the property lines, I don't know. I mean, they're only four or five feet from the property line.
Okay. All right.
And where it says all trees and landscaping features will be removed.
That's what they said.
Should we add something about the impact to the stormwater system when you do that?
Yeah, especially on a hill like that. Yes, especially on a hill like that because the butters, I mean, water goes down. Yes, especially on a hill like that because the butters, I mean, water goes down. So when you cut into a hill. But the gravity, is that what you're talking about?
I said, we learned that one the hard way.
Yes. That's what I thought of when we did the site visit. I'm thinking, oh, man, here we go.
Here we go.
So should we say, you know, something about all landscaping, trees and landscaping features will be removed, which creates concerns for
I think, um, I think what I would do is take that at where it is and put in a new bullet about the fact that, um, you know, because of the of the
The nature of the topography being a hill, water is going to go down around the butters.
Well, there's a, there's going to be a a negative impact on the storm, the
Yeah.
the natural stormwater systems by removing trees and installing walls.
Yeah. And I agree. And a neighbor did say something about a willow tree, an old willow tree in the front yard. I didn't, I missed it. I mean, they they made it sound like there was a hundred year old tree or more in that yard. That, do you take out something like that? That is, that could be, depending on where it is, that could be an issue, but with the water tables you're mentioning.
As a regrading. There is a concern over stormwater impacting the down gradient properties.
I mean, put a reference in there to the other projects on the same road that we've experienced hardships with. Due to that very issue?
Um.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. It's right there. Right there on the road.
Um. Well.
Part of your expertise on this, Kathleen, but it's kind of interesting.
Yeah. Um, well, I sort of said the removal of all the trees and landscaping, um, you know, in, we say in our unfortunate experience in another property on Brushel Road.
Nearby, yeah.
So I could put in something, I mean, this only go into the select board, it's not going to mass housing. But it is the planning board's experience that the removal of all trees and landscaping on a site on a similar site on Brushel Road.
Yeah, I'm looking at pictures online and there are willow trees. Right beside the driveway.
Mm-hmm. Well, they were saying to us that they were going to leave those that I know some of those trees were staying, but maybe only on the side of the driveway that's between them and the house next door.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Because wasn't that where the driveway was going to move over?
The issue is you're putting retaining wall five feet from a property line. You're just not going to be saving trees.
No, yeah.
It's like a paper exercise to say, oh, yeah, you know, that little, that little circular dot is not going to be impacted when we know that the root structures go well beyond that. It's just not, uh, it's just not a reasonable thing to think, the way, the way sites. And in fact, putting a retaining wall five feet from the property line is likely to affect the neighbor's trees whose root systems probably extend beyond that boundary that they don't know exists.
Yeah.
For that language, um, creating significant stormwater runoff. I don't know if that helps. I'd like to just say down gradient.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Kathleen.
Yes, thank you very much.
So we would say there is a, so what was that language again, Dani? What'd you say?
Um, creating significant stormwater runoff, like you said, down gradient.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you done with those edits, Kathleen?
Yeah. Anything else?
That last paragraph, that just that minor change in the first sentence to encourage construction on sites close to train.
Yeah.
Um, sorry. Are you done, April?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. Um, yeah, neighbors are writing to me that there are willow trees. So, um, I thought we could add, we could probably steal it from the other letter about the, I don't think there's room for a play area. And I don't see any area for schoolchildren to wait for the bus. I don't know that snow is an issue the same way, though.
Well, we did say there's no open space for the residents and the anticipated children who would be living in this project. And we've said, you know, this entire, you know, the entire site's covered by two buildings and a parking lot. Um, so, um, you know, we, we've already, we've got that in there.
Would the, would a bus be able to get in and out? And is there a standing area for the kids for school?
I don't think buses go down private ways or driveways.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't send a bus down a driveway.
No, they don't. I mean, in Randolph, they wouldn't, on Randolph Ave, they wouldn't even go up the driveway to that project.
Right.
Okay, so but there, would there be a place for the kids to stand for the bus? Because I'm telling you, I'm fresh, well, Kathleen knows she lived there, there's nowhere to stand, like, safely. I mean, so they'd have to stand somewhere off the street.
You made Woodmere put a kind of pad area near their entrance wall. So if it was anything, it would have to be something similar to that, because we wouldn't send a bus up a driveway.
We did the same type of thing at Milton Woods.
Yeah.
The Pulte property. But it's fairly flat here at the, at the street. So, I mean, whether it's in, in the front yard setback, it seems doable here. More doable than than trying to do it on Truman Parkway for sure.
Yeah. So um, we could just add that in, you know, up above.
April, may I make a suggestion? While she's looking at adding that in, can Tim pull up the revised Amor Road one, Amor Road?
Jameson, yeah, there it is. Think you can keep scrolling down, Tim. So there's more of a critical mass change.
Um, Tim, um, could, could you have the DPW just check about snow? Are they not going to go on that site either? To reduce snow removal?
They're, they're not going to go on either site to do snow removal. So they have to take care of it on site. If it was, if it was, if they were proposing a subdivision with the public street, it'd be a different story, but they, they don't, they wouldn't go up a private driveway to do snow removal.
Okay.
So can I just add, can Tim perhaps do this live on the screen? At the end of that sentence, that where it says amount of impervious surface, if we could add and to increase open space.
How does that sentence start?
So it says the architects agreed to look at the redesign of the dwelling units for the potential location of parking under the buildings to reduce the amount of impervious surface and to increase open space. Yes. Maybe add the word area after pickup in the next sentence. So the applicant should be required to provide space for snow storage, play area for children, and a drop off pickup area. Yeah, okay. Good. One thing, maybe we should think about this in looking at that again. The planning board requires subdivisions to be dark sky compliant. What we really require is the lighting to be dark sky compliant. So we could say that requires lighting in subdivisions. Can we do that live here, Tim, too?
While he's doing that, Cheryl, I was thinking of the willow trees. Neighbors are lobbing me texts right now talking about the willow trees. On a scenic road, I know this is a long shot because we don't know if that part of the road is scenic. Are the, are the trees on the whole site? Part of what gets discussed under the scenic bylaw, or is it just trees on town property?
I think it's trees on town property.
Worth a try.
And those trees, are they, how far back from the street are they?
Oh, they're now.
They're a little bit. Um, I would guess.
There wasn't anything right on the road.
Well, right at the marker, it says 936, and then there's a tree. It's hard to tell with the picture on Google Earth, but it's maybe 12 feet from the marker, which is probably 12 feet. Maybe, maybe the tree's 20 feet off the street. It's not a huge willow, but it is, it is a beautiful willow.
Willows protected.
Um, let me check, let me check the shade tree. I, I don't, I think each town decides what trees are special to their town. But let me, let me just check.
Let's, let's finish up this Amor Road. No, that's okay. And then we can think about what to put in another, the other letter to
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping all around. Sorry about that.
I think we kind of intentional. Don't apologize. But let's, we're almost done with this one. So let's try to get through this one, I think, and then we can make a note about the trees.
So can we put the word after certification? So it says USGBC lead certification requirements, because I think it's the after the word certification. Because there are requirements that lead one to get certified. So I think we don't necessarily need them to be certified as long as they meet those requirements. I know it sounds nuanced, but it does make a difference. So after the word cert, yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Cheryl, do do we have, so I, I'm not qualified to to judge lead certifiable. I mean, I don't think we have staff that would be able to look at something like that and make a judgment on that. That's why I don't want to go too far down this road. You know, saying like certifiable. I mean, having worked in City of Boston in the office that sort of managed that, you know, we had a staff of
Yeah.
Kathleen, sorry.
Your staff there requires the architects to take responsibility for saying that is being met. They have to submit the checklist, and then they have to say, it's like a self-certification system in Boston. So I think it would be the same thing here. So they would have to submit the checklist, the lead certi, the lead certification checklist. And maybe it would just have a peer review, just, you know, to review it, just like we do for other things.
We can't have two, we can't have the requirements in that sentence twice.
Okay. So where does it say it twice?
Lead certification requirements so as to exceed the stretch code requirements of the town's building code.
I got you. All right. Take out, take out the word, put it in. Well, it might.
Yeah, just have the certification and take out the, that requirements. Can't have two of it in the same sentence.
I've been a, a lead accredited professional since 2006. And so the, these, these things continue to evolve, but the, as long as a lead AP is the one submitting the documentation to show that they're compliant with this, then that's all we would need to rely on.
We don't care whether it's, you know, whether it's complicated for them to do it. This is just a comment to the select board for the site eligibility letter.
This is almost like any licensed architect is lead accredited in these days. It's like as standard as meeting any other building code. So it's not I understand it's, it's not familiar to everyone, but in the industry, it's quite familiar. So their architects would be familiar with it.
So it looks like, does anybody have any additional comment to add on this letter?
Um, I'm sorry about this, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I do, I do think that we should alert the state that, that the snow removal is a cost because I, because I know in the eligibility criteria, they, they, they go over the finances of the fine tooth comb. I think it might be worth mentioning.
I don't think so. Sorry. I mean, I just, you know, that we're, we're just talking about things for the planning board, that what we would require, we don't care whether it costs the money to do it. Um, that they need to set aside the space for the snow removal and whether that's an expense that they have to have. Um, you know, that's, that's not something that we would be, um, you know, that's
I'm just saying we could put in our letter that the planning board would require it. Because it's a good thing to do, that, that they would have an area to put the snow.
In the letter.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
I thought I saw it too, but let's go back to it.
It was there.
It's up at the top, up above the
Okay, okay. I, I thought it was missing. Sorry.
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
I could care less whether it costs the money to do it.
Okay, Kathleen, I hear you. I just want it in the letter. It's up to them to, thank you. I appreciate you putting it in the letter.
No, I think your point was, I think your point was right. And I don't think, as I said, but I don't think it is a financial concern that we need to worry about. We want to make sure they have it. We want to make sure they have it, whether it's costing them money or not.
Exactly. Exactly.
Is everybody happy with this draft letter as it's up 16 AMR? And if so, then we should probably take, make a motion, somebody can make a motion to approve this letter.
I would make the motion.
In a second?
To.
Sorry. Go ahead, Kathleen. So go ahead with the motion, sorry.
Just I make a motion to approve the, the letter to the, from the planning board to the select board for 16 Amher Road.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Nothing, we'll do a roll call vote. Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Jenny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay. And let's move back to 936 Brush Hill Road.
I sent the yellow version to Tim just, you know, a couple of minutes ago.
So in looking at this again, what do you think about changing that instead of saying to break up the buildings? It's just say to redesign the buildings. Because, you know, maybe they would, that would be more.
They come up with something that'll look better?
I don't, just want them to break up what they've got, but I want them to redesign it. Thank you. Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Kathleen. You picked up those comments.
Yep. Paragraph looks good to me, too. So in this, um, third bullet, the second one highlighted about regrading and removal of all trees and landscaping. Do we want to make a statement here about the historic trees? And the significant trees and the impact of, I don't know, Jenny, you could maybe provide some.
Yeah, so, um, it seems like there is some ecological value. And, and a willow tree does look like it's pretty tall, so, um, uh, I don't know if I could call it a species tree, though. Um, rare and special trees, um, on the site, like the willow near the entrance are well worth preserving for the scenic way. And for the future residents.
Can you repeat, like, tell me where to start on that?
Oh, sorry, sorry, it's Tim.
The bullet that starts with because, we'll add it.
Because of the intensive regrading and the removal of all trees and landscaping, there's a danger of stormwater problems for the abutters. Okay, so I guess our next sentence after abutters. Do we want a new bullet or do we just, um?
No, I think you can put it in there.
So after, after abutters, period, new sentence. Special trees or help me out if, if anybody comes up with a better word.
How about particular care should be taken to preserve?
Significant trees.
Say whatever you say about the tree, yeah.
Yeah, significant trees.
I think rare and special was a better term.
Okay, yep. Um, rare and, instead of significant, could we say rare and special, Tim? Trees on the site like the weeping willow by the entry for the continued view of the neighbors and, and the future residents.
I lost my connection there for a minute. I.
Okay, rare and special trees.
There should be taken to preserve where.
Like the weeping willow near the entry for, um.
You could just say which would, which would buffer the site, which would protect, it would buffer the site potentially from the street and the neighbors or help to buffer the site or soften the view.
Which would, yeah, provide buffer.
And soften the view from the street. Cause I, I mean, otherwise, I mean, seriously, it looks like a fortress.
Okay. It is a beautiful tree. It really is.
So what's the line?
Oh, okay, uh, near the entry, which would buffer the site from the street. Just like you have it streak, period. Okay, which, which would provide buffer.
I think we might have lost.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
Can we add historic on that top line of the showing on the page? The site is located on an historic narrow winding road.
And then I think the word do after the word certification after US Green Building Council is supposed to be so rather than do. Yeah, the applicant should be required to meet these same standards twice at the end of that paragraph.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Hey, you're doing this on the fly, no problem.
So aside from that one last adjustment, does anyone else have any feedback for this letter? And feel comfortable with where we are here?
Um, I, I was just looking at Attorney Galvin's letter and, um, he, he, um, he had an interesting point at number seven. Not that we necessarily want to lift it, but possibly. He said, um, the developer states in its descriptive narrative, it has, it has attempted to balance the single family nature of Brush Hill Road with the institutional nature of Curry College by the multifamily housing it proposes. It is inconceivable that anyone could seriously and good conscience even make such a statement, since the statement is so patently untrue. Says the developer is simply proposing the maximum number of units that could be shown on the site. It is only unique in the sense that it is so utterly incongruous with the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, he's already sent that letter, so I don't see the reason.
Okay, so he's going to send a letter separately?
Yeah.
So, okay, and that, and that's going to go right to Mass Housing?
No, he's going to send that to the select board.
Oh, okay.
And I, and if he wa, I mean, if I would recommend, I mean, he could send it to the, to Mass Housing, but I, I'm representing quite, full disclosure, I'm representing a butters to a 40B in another town. And Mass Housing has no interest in hearing from the butters at this point. So he should be saying that to the select board. The select board could include that in their attachment to Mass Housing. But, you know, he's going to have that opt, that ability before the zoning board to raise that same concern. But, but I know my clients send, send letters to, you know, on their own, not me. They, they're also all lawyers. So they drafted their own letter to Mass Housing and Mass Housing, I don't think, did anything with it.
Okay.
Kathleen included sort of a quote that says, it doesn't go into that level of detail, but it does quote the applicant's package in balancing single family nature of Brush Hill Road with the institutional nature of Curry College in her draft, too.
Okay, good, good.
Okay. So if we don't have any more comments on this, I mean, I personally think this looks great. If anyone else has anything to add from the board, this is our time. If not, I would entertain a motion to vote to advance this to the board of select.
So, in a second.
Okay, any discussion? No. We'll do a roll call vote. Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Jenny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler? April Anderson, yes. Okay.
I thought of one last thing. Did we include visibility issues for pedestrians and drivers just off the site? When you take a left coming out of the site, the sun was so bad that it was not safe for me to walk down to the left beyond. Because if a car came along, the car would not see me and I would have been blinded coming back. And I know oftentimes when we do sites, we, we consider safety just off the site. I'm sorry.
We mentioned the wind.
We've already said, you know, it's a winding, you know, narrow road. You know, I mean, as I said, this isn't the last time anybody has any ability to sort of say that there's a traffic and safety issue here. So I think, you know, I think, I think we, we plugged it in, so.
And I bet you know this too, Kathleen, that there are visibility issues, especially in the snow. And, and things tend to grow because it's so windy and turny and everything. And there are visibility issues up and down Brush Hill Road there. So anyway, okay, we've already voted. So public, get your visibility concerns to the next board because I was too late.
I said, we, it's not too late. It's already in there, Jenny. Cause we've talked about.
Oh, you've got visibility?
That, that, you know, but we've said that it's a narrow scenic, you know, it's this narrow scenic road. I mean, that sort of hints right there that you've got a problem with seeing. You know, the traffic is going to be an issue. So I think we've got it in there.
I think we have to move on because we still have a couple more things to do. So, um, Tim, on Walcourt Cutwoods on the zoning bylaw amendment, do we have folks on that line that want to update us on their progress? Do you know, is this, are we expecting a report tonight? I see a hand raised by Attorney Corcoran, so I'm assuming that's a yes. Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
You were right.
Okay, so what I said, I didn't hear you respond to me. Um, what I would suggest we do now is just let Mr. Corcoran, who's proposed this zoning change, give us an update on where he is with the neighborhood. Okay, Ned, you're recognized. If you could just introduce yourself and tell us where you are.
Good evening, April, members of the board. I'm also got Jack Dolly available to speak. We spent some time with Tony Chikello and his butters in particular and came, did some modifications to the, to the form of the bylaw that was submitted earlier. I gave those changes to Tony a week ago. Unfortunately, either, either my computer failed or his failed because he didn't get it until we spoke again yesterday. We are speaking, we're not, we're doing our best to try to resolve with each other. But we think that the board is going to need to engage in the specific review of the proposed bylaw. We submitted a number of different pieces of information that in some ways were responsive to questions that were asked previously. And we didn't have direct responses to, and also provided additional information relative to comparable projects here in Milton and elsewhere. And I can walk quickly through those items as well. So, um, we tried to narrow the, the bylaw a little bit to address the concern about children, adult and otherwise. And the, with the notion being that anyone under the age of 22 would not be able to live in a unit more than 12 consecutive weeks at a time. So there wouldn't be, certainly wouldn't be full-time residents who would address the issue of college-age students coming home for the summer vacations and whatnot. So the language, you've got to kind of take a more careful look through it. And we can do that now or I can do it perhaps next Thursday or at a follow-on meeting. But one of the questions that was asked was, what are the bylaw provisions for, how is age restriction handled in other locations in town? It's actually, there are specific provisions provided in our bylaws for the Residence D, which is Unquity House, Residence D1, which is Winter Valley and Home, Inc. And Residence D2, which is Fuller Village. All of those are aged 62 or 62 and over with, with the Residence D also being handicapped. There's no age restriction on the issue of handicap. That's the definition of how you qualify as a handicap. And in each of those cases, the definition says that one of the tenants, one of the occupants must be 62 or over. That's the restriction. They allow younger spouses, other adult, younger adults to live with them, others to live with them. But the restriction is that at least one person be 62 and over. We also provided a provision in bylaw, one of the bylaws for the town of Westwood deals with age restriction. There's simple, simple references that the, at least one person reached the age 55 or over. We provided a cover memo, Jack, from Jack directly. Jack Dolly, Jack lives in an age-restricted condominium development in Concord that's similar to this. His wife is under the age of 55. He is over 55, so he is the primary occupant. They do have two adult children who have spent weeks at a time. But when they're home on vacation, but they are not full-time residents, nor will they. We provided some other material that sort of got at what's happening here and what's happening elsewhere. We called out the traffic, the trip generation summary tables that we provided in the traffic report with the special permit application. Those traffic counts, there was a traffic trip generation rate that was arrived at through evaluating Quisset Brook, which is non-age-restricted condominium development, development here in town. Pine Tree Brook, which is also Home, Inc., which is age-restricted. And two other developments in Belmont that Northland had done. One with 62 units and one with 55 units. And based on the, a, an averaging of trip rates, came to a trip generation summary that would say that in the peak hour. an averaging of trip rates, came to a trip generation summary that would say that, um, in the peak hour, there are, um, less than one vehicle trip per minute, um, in each, in each of the afternoon in the peak, there's fifty-one in the morning peak, fifty-four, uh, in the afternoon, excuse me. Twenty-eight, uh, trips in the, uh, morning peak, twenty-nine trips in the afternoon peak, which were anticipated for Walcott Woods. Uh, we don't think there's any reason to, and because three of those four others were non-age-restricted. We think it's reasonable to assume that there wouldn't be any material, uh, change, uh, in trip generation if you have, um, uh, situations where you have younger spouse living or a dependent adult child living or, um, a child under the age of twenty-two living for short periods of time. There was also a concern raised by some of the neighbors that, well, in this case, you have fairly large units. Three thousand, twenty-five hundred plus square feet with the ability to build out basements. So we provided, um, information about the relative size, uh, of other units, uh, done by the development. I shared a co- copy of an email that I shared with, uh, Tony Chikello in that regard. And we did a comparison analysis of school-aged children. Um, this is obviously a concern in any, any one of these developments, uh, that, that in six other, um, age targeted by design, not age-restricted, um, that Jack, uh, Northland has done, one in Ducksbury. One, two, one in Belmont, uh, one in South Weymouth, one in Bourne, one in Burlington, and Woodmere. That there, um, the average number of school-aged children in a unit is point one. So it is highly unusual that there would be any, uh, school-aged children. And certainly with the bylaw restriction as it's being proposed, that you can't have a child, uh, living for any more than twelve weeks, uh, consecutive, uh, at, at a time or twenty-four weeks aggregate for a year. There's no reason to think that you would have anyone living there with, permanently with a school-aged child, um, you couldn't do it. The last thing I would point out, and Jack has other things, uh, to address, I think I'd certainly want him to do that, would be that. I think I said this before, you have fifty-four unit owners sort of buying into the same bargain. They're each selling their homes in subdivisions and moving to the age-restricted location. They're doing that in reliance on the fact that fifty-three other folks are doing the same thing. And they're buying into the notion that ne- none of, that they will not violate, nor will others violate, um, the, the provisions of really what you're trying to do. Um, and, um, the condominium association, uh, the, 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 the folks to worry about, if you're thinking about who, you know, who would have a problem with you? Will it be the guy next door, or the couple living two, two units over, or down across the, across the cul-de-sac? You know, they're the first ones that are gonna notice that there's a problem, or go right to the condominium association, or right to the owners, hey, what's going on? Why are you doing this? What are you doing? Everybody's buying into that same bargain. So I think that the intent of the bylaw, as we understood it at the time it was originally drafted, would that you would be restricting primary occupants age fifty, age fifty-five and over. And that that sets the baseline for who would be allowed to live, uh, in this type of, of, of a location. And that there would be, uh, in different, um, folks who would come along with them. A young, you know, yes, a younger spouse, yes, perhaps a dependent child. Um, yes, perhaps a live-in, um, healthcare provider or other provider, um, would be living there. But, but beyond those circumstances, it was never anticipated, nor should it be anticipated, that you would have families moving in with children. Um, and, and occupying, as if they were moving into a single fam- into a subdivision with single-family homes. It's a different market. And people, and people make decisions to buy in, knowing that others are making the same decisions. So with that, I, I, I see, obviously open you up to questions and, um, I know you've been busy, uh, really focused on these forty-B issues, and so the opportunity to really dig into the materials that we provided is, is difficult and we appreciate that. And we appreciate your time tonight and we look forward to a more robust, robust consideration when the board has had a better opportunity to, um, dig into the materials.
You're muted, April.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm opening my soda, I didn't want anyone to. All alarmed. Um, so we have a deadline for new articles, um, next Wednesday, which is the date of our meeting. So I think what we are trying to get a flavor of is how much discussion has occurred between you and the neighbors and whether or not you've come to an agreement. And what I'm sensing is that you have not, um, really flushed out the issues that you are going to be working on with the neighborhood. Is that true?
Right, your mic's unmuted?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, uh, we've taken a stab at flushing it out, we're not in an agreement with the neighborhood.
Okay.
We think the board needs to take the, the lead a little bit in moving this forward through a process that arrives at a town meeting in February.
Okay, well, I just, I mean, we can discuss that with the board. I mean, we have, as you know, you just went through a painful discussion about two forty-B projects, which are new. We have seven forty-B projects, forty-B has really become the forefront of our discussion. And as you've heard in the comments earlier tonight, if you are on during Citizen Speak in every meeting that we've had for the last several weeks, is that the public is asking us for a forty-B plan. Um, I interpret that to mean we need to do a lot more aggressive thinking around the for- creation of affordable units, and we are trying to do that. Um, we have two articles that we need to discuss for the next town meeting, and those are a priority of mine to create affordable housing. One is through, um, condo conversion, which we still have yet on our agenda to discuss tonight, and the other is through accessory dwelling units, which we haven't even discussed yet. We need to get through both of those by next week. Um, so I think, you know, the board can chime in, I don't know if this, addressing this, um, issue at Walcott Woods rises to the occasion of being a top priority for us in the next seven days. But, uh, uh, the way I was feeling about this, Ned, is that I understand it's an issue that you would like to address. We're happy to work with you, but we have a major priority right now on our plate, which is doing everything we possibly can to stave off the influx of forty-B projects. And I don't know that we're gonna have the time to get to this in the next week. So I don't, as far as the pl- planning board taking the lead on a process, I, I'm not prepared to do that, at least not right now.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure I'm asking.
If, if other members of the board wanna speak to that issue, you can go right, that's just my feeling.
I, I actually agree, I mean, it's, it sounds, I, I'm, I'm glad to hear you're working with the neighborhood, um, Ned. I think it's very important to work with the neighborhood, there was a very long, uh, community process, um, and the neighborhood worked really well with the developer and the developer did work well with the neighborhood. And I think it's very important on a project like this to continue that. Um, we're just not there yet, um, but, you know, there's another town meeting in May, um, and it sounds like you're on a good track. Um, the language that I have in front of me, the version that I saw, it seems to allow under the age of eighteen, which I think you're updating. It, there were no limits on the college-age, um, pe- um, people, um. So there's no twelve-week limit on the version that I saw in my inbox, so I'm behind on the versions. Uh, so I'm not comfortable going forward tonight either.
Uh, the Dropbox or the OneDrive folder did ha- did have or does have the updated language, which, um, I did read and it, it is consistent with Ned's description. Uh, I think when we spoke about this two weeks ago, uh, I thought we had, did we take a vote to move this forward and ask them to continue working on it, April?
That was for the December town meeting.
Ah, okay.
There was no chance of that, I mean, the conversation with the neighborhood literally wasn't even scheduled for after the day that I was supposed to go before the warrant committee and present an article that I didn't know what it was gonna say. So, I talked to the Select Board and there was nothing to officially poll, because there was no article to put forward. Um, but that's what we voted for. So, I mean, I don't actually have a huge, uh, uh, that is proposing, I think it's reasonable. I, I do think, though, that there has to be some discussion with the neighbors, I mean, this, we have to remember, this project was originally started with the neighbors.
Yeah, I guess.
An agreement, uh, among the, on the details of the project, and then it was brought to the Select Board and the Select Board entered into a, an agreement with the developer, and then it was brought to the Planning Board. So a lot of these things were worked out before they even got to us. I don't think that we have time or frankly the energy to put towards working this issue immediately and dropping everything else that's on our plate when all we're hearing about is affordable housing. So.
Yeah, I would just, uh, comment that, um, it's, uh, one of the things that I, I find in our zoning, um, is that it lacks consistency in, in many places. And I think that the information here about what the other age-restricted housing, uh, requirement of having one uh, primary person be of the required age is a significant, uh, factor for me. Um, and also, I think, um, you know, be, being a parent of two college-age students um, during, um, a COVID time period and not knowing whether they're going to have to come in quarantine at home. You know, having the language that allows for those college-age students to be home for a particular period of time makes a lot of sense to me. And again, age-restricted and knowing that someone, and again, having personal experience with this, uh, of a parent needing twenty-four-seven care, and having a caregiver be able to live, uh, in a unit, that makes complete sense to me. So I am, for one, am comfortable with what's being proposed. I, I do hear, um, the, the concerns about understanding what the neighbors think. But in terms of looking at this from a purely, um, zoning perspective, um, th- these requests, uh, I, I could find, uh, I could support.
So I don't know if anyone else has anything to add, I mean, I would say, Cheryl, I don't disagree with you at all, I think I could support these two. My, my problem with this, though, is that I need the proponents and the folks that are gonna ask us to bring this to town meeting for them, to do a little bit of homework. If they come to us and say we're at an impasse and we can't come to an agreement and you guys have to decide, fine, then we can have a more substantive discussion about it, but we're not gonna do that over seven days. And I'm not convinced that they're, they're at an impasse yet, I, that's not what I heard from Ned, I heard from Ned, they're still working it out. And so I wanna give them more time to do that, I, I agree with you, I think that this is, these are not. Uh, maybe the, somebody will have better ideas on specificity of the language, but the theory anyways isn't, I don't object to it, I don't think, I think it makes sense. But I wanna make sure that there's an ample discussion with the neighborhood, because that's really where all of these discussions started. Anybody else wanna weigh in?
Well, I mean, I, I, I've looked at the language, it's very similar to language that I've used in other situations, so I don't have an issue with it at all. And I think, I mean, I, you know, I, I was sort of looking at, it's more important to have the condominium documents address this, not the zoning. Um, and so, you know, it's just, it's one of those examples where we throw all this stuff into the zoning code and, you know, it shouldn't, shouldn't really be there. And so, I, you know, I don't know, I feel like Cheryl, I mean, I sort of feel that this is reasonable language and I'm, I'm fine with it. Um, we wanna go forward and, and wait until the neighbors have come back, but I thought Ned had said just now that they were at an impasse, so.
So Ned, do you wanna weigh in on?
Yeah, so this, this, it's sort of a tale of two scheduled special town meetings. The, we, we did take, uh, an, an effort to, to move quickly to put something before the December town meeting. And it was clear, we agreed that if we couldn't, uh, reach agreement, um, that we would not request that the Planning Board put that language forward, and, and we weren't in an agreement a couple of weeks ago. Um, there were questions and then we were, issues that we were trying to respond to. Uh, I think in this case, um, what we're asking is the board to put language forward that may still need to be adjusted, as it, as often happens in the process of moving zoning from the point where you advance it to the Select Board to the point where it gets, uh, actually considered by town meeting, uh, that the, that the remaining details, to the extent there, there are details that need to be worked out, that we take that amount of time. The next couple of opportunities with the Planning Board, um, to, to advance that. I know you have a lot of other things going on, but we think, I think there's a, that's reasonable, um, that we have an opportunity to advance this through your process to the February town meeting. Um, and, um, we would ask that you take the language as it's currently proposed and advance that to the warrant. And that we will continue to work with the neighborhood and with the Planning Board to resolve any last, um, um, things that need to get resolved. That's our, that, that's the, that's the request.
So what are, what are the items that need to be resolved, Ned? What are the, is there a list of things where you're in disagreement with the neighborhood? And I see Anthony has his hand raised, so we can ask him to. But is it a finite list, or is it, we just don't agree with the content as a whole?
I, 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 I won't speak for Tony, I know that Tony has raised, in our conversations over the last few weeks, a, a number of things that we've tried to address in the, in the more recent uh, body, I know Tony's raised, he and I had a conversation yesterday, uh, uh, about it, and another one today. Um, I think we're negotiating some details, but I can't tell you that we that, that, uh, we'll ultimately get to an agreement, uh, on what those, and how we would get there.
Okay, let's move on to, to, um, Anthony Chikello and allow him to speak on behalf of the neighborhood then. Mr. Chikello.
Uh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thanks for hearing us, um, uh, I sat through your meeting tonight and I really appreciate what you folks do. Um, and I'm not gonna take too much more of your time. Um, the language that we've got here, um, is not ready to go. Um, I haven't had, unfortunately, apparently Ned said, sent me something next week, last week, I didn't get it. Um, I have not had a chance to talk, to, talk about this language with my clients at all. So, I raised some issues with Ned that I thought were really problematic, and some of them, I think, may have been unintentional. Uh, in terms of some of the drafting. But I, I, at this point, I haven't had a chance to talk to this substantively about my client, so I can't tell you exactly the extent of the issues. I know that some of the issues that, that Ned has discussed with you were very concerning to, to my clients. Um, and I think when you talk about, um, Unquity Village and, or, uh, Unquity House and, and Fuller Village and that kind of thing, that is what the neighbors thought that they were gonna have next to them, a higher-end version of that. They didn't anticipate parents with college-age kids or kids under eighteen would be living in this. They figured it would be Fuller Village people and other similar people, because that's the experience that we have in this town for, uh, these developments. And there's, there are concerns about traffic, maybe we'll get those satisfied, but I don't know. Um, and these units are bigger than, uh, the units in the other ones in town. So, those are the concerns that my clients have. Um, we may be able to get through this, I don't know if we can do it in a week.
Okay. So what I suggest, um, thank you very much. So what I suggest, um, to both of you and to the board is that we table this until next Wednesday and get a report from everybody next Wednesday, we can ask the Select Board at their meeting to do the same thing they did last time, if they wish, um, to allow this to be added to the warrant if we approve it at our meeting. And, I, I mean, I don't, I don't even know how far apart the folks are, I don't know what the neighbors even object to. We need a more substantive report at our next meeting and then we can decide, and there's a risk on both sides. We could decide to move this forward to the warrant, or we could decide not to. So I think the, the, um, objective would be to find a way to get to yes between now and next Wednesday, and if you don't, can't do that, we'll figure it out on our own. Um, but that would be my suggestion to the board.
April. Just, uh, one, yeah, just one question for you, um, or if, um, Ned or somebody can answer. What, what, is there a need for, um, this sounds awful, need for speed? Is there a need to hurry, like, it sounded like it wanted to, you want it to be in February, but is that, does that hold something up? Because I'm, I guess I'm, I'm agreeing with you, April and Denny, I mean, it sounds like everybody here is agreeing. It's just some folks are like, we're gonna get there anyway, so it might as well be yes, I don't mind putting words in our mouths. Um, and others that wanna hear more from the neighborhood, and I'm. mouths. And others that want to hear more from the neighborhood. And I'm kind of bending to that side. I, I think I'd rather hear, you know, I'd let, I'd rather let that play out, but I'm curious what the need for it to hurry up would be.
Ned, do you want to answer the question?
Sure. We're dealing with a couple of purchases and sale agreements where the issue of who can be here has been flagged. And the, the bylaw was, is written simply to say over 55, or 55 and over. And it doesn't really contemplate that there's a more realistic world out there. So I think my, so that's, that's why. We're trying to, we're trying to pay a little bit of attention to what's happening with, with the market for these, for this product. At the, at, so my question, I guess, would be, are you, is the board meeting next Wednesday? Because I'm, so you're, you're, you are meeting formally next Wednesday. Well, then I would, I would suggest that we will do our best to narrow the issues to a point that hopefully is acceptable and will report back to the board. I'd be willing to report back to the board next Wednesday to see where we're going to up commit to working with Tony in the interim.
Thank you very much. Okay, if everybody's fine with that, let's move on to the condo conversion by law. So at our last meeting, we had a really good discussion. And I think the next step was going to be Cheryl and Kathleen, we're going to get together on Friday and talk about it more. And I don't know if, I saw some of your comments from Tim, but why don't we talk through what's happened since our last meeting?
Well, Kathleen circulated revised draft, which incorporated the comments from the last meeting, which looked good. I followed up with some comments and questions about including open space. I think it was something that I flagged last time as wanting to think about a little bit more. So I did take a look at that. And I also, Tim and Allison took a look at that. And then I started thinking about lot coverage as well. And I looked at some examples, but I also, you know, the, the examples of the 240Bs that we talked about tonight. And also I took a look at 1238 Canton Ave and 75 Canton Ave. Our, it's interesting, you know, our tools for controlling how much we can build on a parcel, our setbacks, our height. And otherwise, it's just open space and lot coverage or, and slash floor space. But when we look at the zoning, we have a whole description of lot coverage, but then we say it doesn't apply to single-family use or single-family use on those R, AA, RA, RB, and RC. So if we think about these alternative, what we're looking at with the condo conversion and being able to build more units on a site than what's in the existing house, we're probably looking at multifamily. And so would we, would we be better off considering a combination of lot coverage and open space to control how much we can build in addition to the how many units per square foot of land that we talked about last time? So what we talked about last time in the diagrams that I showed, where if you said you could build units that would equal one unit per 5,000 square foot of land area. And so in those diagrams, I, we had the four test sites. So Tim, are you able to pull up some of the diagrams that I, I sent or put in that, that OneDrive folder called, I think it was Test Drawings?
I'm working on it. I'll share my screen when it's up.
Okay, so it's the 1238. So what I showed last time for 1238 was, and, and again, 1238's in an RA district. Did I get, no, it's an RB district. No, I'm sorry. It's an RA district. So an RA district is a one-acre district. And in that particular case, we came up with the fact that you could have two buildings with nine units or 18 units plus keeping the existing. And I showed those 18 units in two buildings. And so it had a lot of open space still, because you're concentrating the units into those two buildings. So I decided I wanted to test. Well, what if you did that as townhouses? Or what if you did that as single families? So I took the footprints of the townhouses and the single families that Tamposi is proposing for Amor Road. And I plugged those on and popped those on to 1238 Canton Ave, just to see how much coverage they would, they would yield. And so in the nine unit, two buildings with nine units plus the existing house and the existing garage, you're looking at a lot coverage of 12%.
Cheryl, can you tell me which one of those? I can only open one at a time or else acrobat.
All right. So can you just pull up, yeah, pull up the one that we looked at last week first, which is the one that has the two buildings. So it's, I think it's called Test 1238?
Can you see that?
Yes, thank you. So again, this was what you could yield if you use that one unit per 5,000 square foot of land area. You could build, you could put three units in the existing historic home, build two buildings each with nine units. So you'd be looking at 21 units on that parcel. And then you would have parking in addition to that, which would take up land area. But that orange line around, set in from the red line, the red line's the property line, the orange line's the setback line. This, and with three streets as frontage, you have a 30-foot setback. And then there's a rear yard of 30 feet. So basically, that whole orange area is 30 feet setback from the property line. And if you calc, I calculated what that area is with, between the property line and the setback line. And that is 33% of the lot area. So if you said you had a 30% requirement for open space, it would be met within that setback. So now, Tim, can you go to the next?
I'm sorry, how, how many acres is that lot? Or how many square feet?
This one's 104,000 square feet and change. So in that folder, the townhouse test, the fourth one down, wait, why is there two? Yeah, I'm sorry, the top one, Tim. So the lot coverage of what we just looked at was 12%, counting the existing buildings and those two new buildings. And then here, this is showing nine units. They're all townhouses. So you can see the footprints are bigger. So now we have a total footprint on the new buildings of 10,450 square feet. We still have the same kind of requirement for parking. It's just distributed differently here because of the footprints. In this case, the lot coverage is 15%. It's still the, your open space, 30% could be achieved in the setback. Now, Tim, can you go to the one, the, the second one down? Now, the footprints of those townhouses were only 500 and some square feet, which is a little bit small. But that's, I just used the ones that Tamposi had proposed. And these are the, the footprints of the single families that Tamposi had proposed. So again, this is the same number of units, but now you have, actually, it should be three units in the existing house. And then you have six townhouse units on the left, and you have 12 single families and driveway and parking spaces. So our zoning doesn't, the way it's drafted now, you could come up with other solutions still to put the same number of units on the property, because we haven't really given any other parameters of, of what we would like to see. In this case, I personally think that this kind of a design would be, would be a disservice to the historic house that we're trying to keep because it doesn't have enough, it's a totally, it's kind of enveloped by this new part of the development. But this all, this is all, again, within the setbacks. So in, in looking then at, Tim, is it possible to get the site plan for Amor Road, Amor Road and 936 Brushel Road?
Tim's getting a little bit too good at zipping around these 40B applications. I feel, I feel bad.
This is, I, I dream about these things. It's bad. I know, I know every page, like.
So sad. I'm so sorry. I was like, woo-woo, he did just zip it right through.
All right. Oh, wait, wait, go back.
Well, do you want the engineering plans or the architectural plans?
The engineering, actually, is the site layout plan because. Right, not that.
I, I'll, I'll find it. Thank you. Yes. All right. So that's 936.
Okay. So at the top, they have the zoning calculation. I think we're, is it off the view here? That chart up there. So in that chart, that, that chart tells us that this is 936, right? Yeah. All right. So that, the proposed lot coverage is 28% and the minimum, and the open space that's proposed is 33.8%. Now, if you zoom out to the whole plan again, I think everybody agreed that there's just very little left of the site here by the time you take these two buildings and you take the parking lots. Well, I brought this into a CAD program and I got it to scale and I tried to do, see how they calculated that open space. And they calculated it, including all the walkways and the, and the transformer and the retaining walls, et cetera. So the actual amount of green space is, is less than that. But it also made me think that if we don't put a requirement of lot coverage or open space, we could very well be looking at site plans that have coverage as much as this. I mean, because they don't have to do the kinds of designs that I've showed in the test samples that I did. And so this, it's even, so on 16 and more road is something comparable, although there the lot coverage is even greater. Actually, you don't have to go to it, Tim. It's 31.4% and the open space, they say, is 43.7%. And again, it's like, we, we think about these as being over, overdeveloped with not, not a lot of open space. But this has a bit more because there's open, there is space between the single-family units. But again, some of this is change of topography and it doesn't seem to matter whether any of this open space is usable and it just is walkways and paved. It does not include the, the parking though. So I guess my suggestion is that we include provisions that put a maximum lot coverage of 20% and put a minimum open space requirement of 30%. And then for that open space, that at least 75% of it have a grade of less than 8% so that it can be, at least 75 can, can be somewhat usable. And that we have a dimension for that open space to be at least 15 feet. So if you look at this plan, for example, Jimmy, can you go to the plan again? Like here, the retaining wall is about five feet off of the property line. And then the, the rear yard is 11 feet. So, you know, this was thought to be too close to the, to the abutting property. There's a lot of concern about that expressed. And then if we look at where the single families, where you're, now you're, the distance to your, Tim, if you move your cursor there, what does that say? 11 feet. It could be a little bit more, I think, at the front, but 30 feet at the sides. So you're starting to get to have something that's more usable at 15 feet. And what these, what all of these tools can do, I think, is again, continue to control the site design in a way that we think is going to be more desirable. So that's the primary focus of what I've been looking at. One other thing I'd like to suggest is that, I think we all saw that three-dimensional analysis of these sites, like I've done for the 40Bs or in Milton Village, or as the applicant provided for Amor Road and 936 Brushel Road are really helpful in understanding the impacts of what's being proposed. So I'd like for us to add in what the submission requirements are, that 3D modeling, whether it be digital or physical, is a requirement for the submission.
I noticed in cluster zoning, I don't think you include wetlands in the open area.
That's what we, like on our Great Estates PUD, so.
Yeah, I think so.
Wetlands are excluded.
Yeah.
I, I, generally the wetlands wouldn't be usable, so, but they are an open space buffer. So I, I don't have a, an analysis which, which would show, you know, how many sites might fall into that category. But I think, you know, if we think about what we're trying to accomplish again, which is having a tool that allows a historic property to be converted into condominiums and have it be, which is something in our zoning now, but it's, but it, it allows it only on sites that are five acres or 10 acres, 10 acres for the most part. So it's not used very often. And we wanted it to be an alternative to 40B, which is why we did this analysis of being able to add units to a site if you preserve the existing historic home. And what, the tools that I think that help control the scale of what we could add to it, that we looked at before, as I said, was how much lot area per unit. And now I'm suggesting we also include a lot coverage and an open space requirement to round out the tools to control the scale.
Where do you, where do you insert that language?
Well, Kathleen, I'm hoping that you would have a suggestion for that. Let me see.
Well, probably under the, under B, I suppose. Or, let's see. So it's, I mean, it's easy enough under, under letter, letter E to put in the, the plan requirement that you want.
Right. So let's see. I think it could go in paragraph B.
Yeah.
Um, where you have the height limit, right?
Yeah.
And the setback limit. I think you could.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. As I said, as the last time we, we talked, we put in some different provisions in here. And I just wanted to point out that we have put in that, and in any project containing 10 units or more, 15% of those would be affordable. So so that's in there. So yeah, so I think we could put those, those limitations in B.
On, on those affordability requirements, do we want to add in language about being eligible for the subsizing inventory?
Um, well, we could, yeah.
I think that's a good idea. That's what our intention is, right?
Yeah.
Tim, did you have any thoughts about the, the lot coverage and the open space? I know you and I had conversations about these tools.
I'm just concerned that it's workable. I'm just concerned that it's workable. I mean, I just don't want, you know, we, we draft our zoning so narrowly here in this town that it can only get used by one project and that's it. So my only concern, and I leave, I defer to you people with more experience with architects and stuff, is to make sure that it's, that it's workable. I want to have a bylaw that somebody actually can use, not something that just sits there and, you know, occupies space in the book.
No, I understand that completely. That's why I like to do the test fits because to me that sort of is.
Yeah.
Sort of, I don't know, sort of proof of, proof of concept, if you will.
Yeah, I defer to you. I mean, obviously I don't have, you know, I don't have that expertise. But that's my only concern is that I just don't want to be building something that can't be done.
Yeah, Kathleen, I, I, I think, I, I share that concern as well. I think in this case, the risk is more kind of a, a market risk where it's just, it's, it's tough for us in, in these situations from a sort of design and site planning perspective to also, you know, know, okay, you know, what is financially feasible for any of the maybe 100 eligible lots for this project? I think, you know, the, the previous risk was, you know, these are being very, very narrowly designed on purpose. You know, as opposed to, you know, we're trying to put controls on a site that, you know, there may be consequences that we don't know. So I think, you know, continuing to, you know, if, if this passes in, in a form similar to this, just monitoring, you know, the, the amount of special permit applications we get, if any, and kind of, you know, trying to tease out, you know, why, you know, things are going the way they're going. I think Cheryl, to answer your question, I, 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 I think your work on the, on the lot coverage and the, the open space percentage is good. I think, you know, well, it's, it's yet to be seen. But I, I think what you've proposed, you know, it's conceivable that projects are doable. And I think that's the best that we can do at this stage in, in crafting zoning. So I think that's fine. Yeah, I, I, I think doing the test fits is, is, is very useful. I mean, you can always do more. You don't want to do too many because then they'll be your job instead of your volunteer effort. But, but I do think that, you know, you've demonstrated that, you know, these are, these are relatively reasonable restrictions. And I think it'll just come down to, you know, if, we just need to continue to monitor this and make sure that it's enticing enough for the development community to do. But we'd have to do that anyway. So I think, I think it's in good shape.
Okay, so, um, so our next step would be to draft language that incorporates those under, under letter B. And, and so there's.
Add that one requirement, sorry, at the end to.
Yeah.
In section.
Yeah, so what is that plan? What would, how does that plan describe?
So you have there what the requirements are. So you have number 10, so it would be E10 says, building elevations for each facade of each building being converted to condominium units.
Yeah.
But, and then you have actually on number 12, such other plans, photographs of existing conditions and renderings. Actually, you know, the plans and elevation should be not only of the converted, but of the proposed new in number 10. And then I, I would say make a, a new number 11.
Yeah.
Right after number 10.
I was gonna put in as a new number.
And.
3D plan?
I would say like three dimensional drawings showing the existing and proposed within the context of abutting properties. Because that's the important part too.
Three dimensional drawings of the structures shown in the, in their context.
Yes.
With adjacent properties.
Right. And. Do we want to say such other? I mean, I think it should be mandatory to have photos of existing conditions and renderings. But we could still have other things that we deem necessary.
I think you, I was just trying to have this vague enough so that, you know, as time goes on and you get other stuff and there's other technologies that are showing things, I didn't want to have a list that, you know, was locked in cement.
I agree you want to have, but I think there should be bare minimum things. And so that we get the applications, we're not having to do like we do now, which is say, okay, where are the existing trees? Where are the existing walls? Where, you know, can you provide a three dimensional?
I did add the existing trees to remain, and existing trees to be removed, as well as all proposed new landscaping, because we've had that issue before. So.
I guess what I would say is the renderings and photos seem to me a sort of a basic requirement. Kathleen, in terms of.
Okay, so you just make, so we just make that, just make that there. And then there's another one and then we add another one.
Yeah.
That, you know, just is general.
Yeah, yeah, I like that better. Our expectations are clear from the beginning then, I think.
Okay.
You're gonna have to demonstrate to us how this really looks and works.
Okay, so, yeah, so number 13 would be photographs of existing conditions and renderings, renderings of what?
Well, you really want to see the, what you're proposing, right? You know what the existing looks like, right? So that you want to see what you're proposing. So it's similar to the three dimensional. But the three dimensional I see as, you know, kind of like the diagrams that were submitted as part of these last two 40Bs where they're sort of ex, extonometric views or aerial views? Because that allows you.
I'm just gonna say renderings of the projects, photographs of existing conditions and renderings of the project.
Very good.
And then such other plans as the planning board reasonably deemed necessary and appropriate under the circumstances.
Okay.
Okay. And then I'll go back up to B and figure out how to word that other language.
Sounds good.
So we had, this shall comply with the setback requirements of the underlying zoning district. But maybe, so, so do you have your changes go in there in the new number 10?
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we change the setbacks. So I'm suggesting is adding something which says, I mean, we can look at the, the way it's written, the way it's written currently in our section 6E. It says, no building alone or in combination with other buildings on the same lot or on, on adjacent lots in common ownership shall cover an area in less, in excess of X percent of the total area of such lot or lots. Then it gives the square footage, which we wouldn't do.
In the existing zoning?
Yeah, so if you, if you, you could say, no building alone or in combination with other buildings on the same lot or on adjacent lots in common ownership shall cover an area in excess of 20% of the total area of such lot or lots. And then that language would be similar to what's in the existing zoning.
Okay.
And then for open space, I'd have to get that section out here.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take a look at that. I got it here.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just making a note to myself.
I don't think we currently have language that I suggested about the dimensions of the open space or the grade.
No, we don't.
So you have to figure something out for that.
Okay. I'll work on it tomorrow and send it.
I'm, I have questions when you guys are ready.
I think we're ready.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how many units could end up on a property. So on 1230 Canton Avenue, there were 21 units in the first visual and that was two and a half acres. So if you had five acres, is it a matter of you could have 40 units? Or just, okay, and then 10 acres, you could have 80 units? Would you have more or less, I mean, you could always go less, but would, would it end up being more than that in any scenario?
No, no, not more than that. And I guess the potential is for it to be less than that if there's wetlands, if there's other topographic change that would make the site plan or our review of the proposal say it's incompatible with the existing or incompatible with the context. Because we, we do have, you know, the discretion as a special permit. And one of the things, the provisions here in B11 says, the total number of dwelling units to be approved by the planning board shall reflect the historical and architectural elements of the structure or structures, including without limitation their design, location, facades, building materials, and compatibility with the predominant architecture of the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, so I mean, so Denny, if you look at H, you know, we, we don't grant this permit unless we decide that the beneficial effects of the project outweigh the impact. So if somebody comes in with some humongo thing, we're just gonna say, I'm sorry, but that's just not appropriate. But so we've got language in here that says that, you know, we've got to sort of say that, you know, any enlargement is, is compatible. The project has to protect the existing dwelling. Um, the design is consistent, you make adequate provision for open space, you know. So if somebody came in with some humongo, humongo thing, you could say, I'm sorry, but no. It's not like a 40B where you have to issue it.
Yeah, right here, this paragraph G.
Yeah.
Looks like H is slid over. Is that intended?
Not on mine, but okay. So I think, Denny, going to your point is that, you know, it's, the language is, is here for the, it's discretionary. It's not, you know, you're not entitled to a special permit. And it's not a 40B.
Yeah, Denny, the way, the way that I kind of think about it is that each of these kind of different controls that are in section B, the, the sort of three over here is like the first gate. And that's the most number of units that could possibly ever be on a site. And then each subsequent control is, is a kind of another restriction that, you know, potentially and probably, quite frankly, reduces that number. You know, because it, it's tough to game out unless you have a specific site and a specific proposal. But, you know, when we say no structure shall contain more than 12 units and no more than six units shall be served from a single building entrance, no single structure shall be more than 100 feet in length. All of these things serve to constrict the, the, the potential footprint, you know, plus the 30% open space, plus the 20% lot coverage. You know, so it's, it's, it's a little bit unpredictable because you don't know which, what site it's gonna be and, and kind of what the topography is gonna be. But I think we do have, you know, one kind of overarching control and then a series of subsequent controls that will, will almost undoubtedly serve to reduce the unit count.
Okay, so I was just trying to get a heads up because I, you know, I, I am, there's like a tipping point where neighborhood could love this or a neighborhood could be really angry about it. And I'm just trying to, to, to best understand it. So, you know, for instance, I, after both site walks earlier, or was it last week? I, I went and I walked the neighborhoods and, and people come up and talk to me. And this happens almost in every neighborhood I go to. And, you know, they, they come up and they tell me they saved their whole life so that they could live in a house and they bought a house and they don't want to live next to, you know, they, they, they thought they were buying into a zone that was all houses and single family houses. And they're, they're really upset because this big change is happening in their neighborhood. And I'd hate to see neighborhoods go through all of these battles with 40Bs and then be, you know, showing up at our doorstep, what are you doing with condos? So I, I understand what you're trying to do here and I, I'm just trying to prepare myself for those, you know, talks in the supermarket that I end up in with, with people who are saying, what are you guys doing? So.
Well, Denny, just for reference, for example, like those one acre lots would be allowed eight units. And we're assuming that a historic home would probably take up, you know, maybe two or three of that eight. So then you're looking at maybe adding five or six on those one acre lots. So it's, it's at least half, if not more than half of what's been proposed. And, you know, I think what we laid out, tried to lay out at our last meeting was we're gonna have to spread our nearly 500 units out across town in order not to have the impacts be felt in a few locations. Like, or, you know, with only seven locations, the idea is you spread these out on many more locations. Because the reality is we just don't have any magic sites waiting there for us to say, yeah, this is a good place to put those units. And so every neighborhood's gonna have to absorb some in order for it to be fair. That's the way I look at it. It's not an ideal situation, but it's better than getting these monsters plopped down on us from outer space.
But these won't necessarily replace 40Bs. I mean, unless it's 10 or more, we won't really have affordable here. We just have more density and, and neighbors.
Well, but, but Denny, the idea was to provide an opportunity for, you know, the classic example are those two houses at Canton and Brushell Road. If they could have turned those into condos, those sellers would have had a different option than selling to the Tamposes. And that's really what we're trying to do is to provide, you know, an owner of one of these houses, another option instead of selling out to some guy who builds golf courses in New Hampshire. So, you know, it's really, that was the idea is to say, is there some mechanism we can provide to save these houses? And we don't because we, our condo conversion statute requires such a huge piece of land and neither one of those properties fit that.
And I think what Tim said is really important that we can see what, if anything, comes in under this bylaw. And then we can make adjustments if we find that we need to. Like Dedham put a moratorium on applications under one of its overlay districts while they retooled that district at one point. So, you know, we could do something comparable to that if we found that it was problematic.
And I would be interested to hear from developers, like April said last time, that, that, you know, I would be interested to see if, if developers would do this instead, in fact.
Yeah, I mean, my comment is, like, when you say people are gonna stop you in the store and ask you what you're doing. I mean, I have the same experience and I think that my point at the beginning of the meeting when I was kicking off the conversation about 40B is that there is no, like, one policy that solves this problem. And so I think people keep saying, oh, where's your 40B plan? As if there's just like this magic, pull out and there's the solution. It's not. It's a combination of a lot of nuanced solutions and a whole bunch of different policies. And this alone obviously isn't gonna create a 486 units of affordable housing, but it could contribute. It could act as an alternative mechanism to someone who would just otherwise say, forget it. I'm not gonna bother with the, you know, trying to sell this huge house. I'm just gonna flip it to a 40B developer because that's the cheapest and easiest thing for me to do. Or, you know, I, I think we have to look, there's a full gamut of policies that we have to explore. And I think this is one. And like we said earlier, it's discretionary, so it doesn't box us in. We don't have to say, yeah, the answer could be no. And I think that Kathleen and Cheryl have done a nice job of creating those, those levels like Tim was talking about of controls so that we can say, well, it doesn't really do this and it doesn't really do that. And a lot of them are discretionary. So I like it as a policy. I think we have to be thinking about like this and we have to be thinking about a lot more of them while also pursuing perhaps some friendly 40Bs and, you know, 100 other things. But, but that's why I really, I really hope that we can move this forward for discussion. But, but that's why I really, I really hope that we can move this forward for discussion and at least have it, have a public hearing on it because I want to hear it from more people. But I am very sensitive to the fact that we've heard over and over at the last several meetings consecutively that we're not doing enough.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's been selling, you know, telling us, "What are you guys doing? What are you guys doing?" And, you know, at least with this point, Denny, you'd be able to say, "Well, we're doing this."
And I, I am, I am very interested to hear if, if developers would actually do this instead of 40Bs, if, if there was a way to run it by someone.
So, but I think what the select board has asked us to do is work on this bylaw and get them a draft. And they would like to run it by a couple of developers that they're talking with. I would like to run it by a couple of developers who have offered their assistance to us, like Kyle Hamish, who, who meetings, got a site plan approval and sent him halfway in, and anyone else that Tim's talking to. And I think, I mean, at this point, with the few changes that you discussed tonight, I think we're in a position to do that. I don't see there's any harm in sharing it and getting feedback.
No, I think we should. Um, I was actually gonna send it to some, a couple of people that I know. Um, once we got it, sort of tick all the red lines out. Um, and, um, and send it off to a couple of people I know to say, "What do you think?"
So we have, again, this timing issue. So the select board wants to close the, or is gonna vote on the warrant at their meeting next week. We have a meeting next week. I would very much like to move this forward, um, on the warrant. And then we can go through the public hearing process. And there's always an opportunity to pull it if we feel like we need to. But I think that we've done a lot of work on it and I think we have good progress to make here. Do folks feel as though, I mean, I, Kathleen, you've already adjusted that language, I think. It sounded like you were typing while you and Cheryl were talking. Is, are there more adjustments to be made?
No, I just need to put in, I've made the, the minor changes. I just need to take a look at the language about the open space and the lot coverage.
Okay.
Because I haven't, I haven't typed in all of that, but I've got everything else. And I picked a couple of typos, and so I, I will do that tomorrow and I'll send it to Tim. And then my thought is that we would send it to the select board to say, "This is what we've got."
Um, I would feel better having wetlands excluded, like we do.
I added that note, Denny.
Oh, I appreciate that, Kathleen. Thank you.
So I'm still ahead. Um, okay, so, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if anybody else is. I don't need to see the language on open space and lot coverage before we submit it to the selectmen because we have a public hearing and ample opportunity to change it if we don't.
Yep.
The comma's in the right place. Um, but what does everybody else feel about this?
Yes, I agree.
Rich and Denny, would you be comfortable moving this on to the select board as a draft so they can vote on it at their next meeting?
Does that mean vote it forward or just open the public hearing process? What is that?
It would, it would vote to move it forward to the warrant, to be submitted to the warrant committee. And we would have a public hearing. And then we would go to the warrant committee, perhaps with an amended version. I don't know if we needed to make amendments or, but it would trigger the process to get it included in the warrant for the February town meeting.
And is the idea also, April, that, um, adoption of this could be favorable in terms of, uh, mess housing in our 40B applications?
Yeah, I think the more that we do on policy, I definitely think that makes...
In terms of timing, I mean, and that, you know, in terms of getting it on February versus May.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if there were enough, uh, significant concerns that it needed to get, uh, referred, I mean, that, that's also a possibility, Denny, you know, just like sometimes, you know, things have gotten referred for, for the study. But I think the, um, moving, having some movement on policy related to affordable housing, I think is our best, from what I understand, is our best strategy in terms of fighting the 40Bs. Um, is really to start addressing how we're going to reach our 10%. And, you know, as April said, it's, it's not gonna be one, um, 40B policy. It's gonna be a lot of initiatives. And I think, uh, this is one that's been talked about actually for a while. Um, we've had it on the list for a while. And, um, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I've spent, uh, I, I, I think between this and, and the Milton Village, you know, a fair amount of time testing these zone, these zoning provisions out for, for my own comfort to make sure I understand what, you know, what I think, um, they could lead to. And, um, you know, I think it's time to get other feedback. You know, like, we've gotten good feedback from other members of the public uh, who've helped make our zoning even better. So I, I would welcome that feedback at this point because I think just, uh, Kathleen did great work to get this started. And, uh, and I, I think it's time to move it forward.
Um, during the public hearing process, would we be able to see some of your visuals? Cheryl, I hate to put more work on your plate, but like, you know, some specific examples of sites like you just did, you know, big old houses, which are no longer suitable as single-family dwellings?
Yeah, I mean, we, um, I can certainly provide the graphics. Um, and we can talk about, you know, what more we think might be helpful for the, for understanding. Um, you know, in addition, or on top of what I've done. But it, it'll be, um, you know, these are just tests, just like we talked about with Milton Village. They're not, you know, as long as people understand they're not actual proposals.
Right.
You know, I'm not spending time designing something. I'm just doing physical fit kinds of analyses. And it's, it's not, uh, you know, you'd have to layer on many other things like we've talked about, um, you know, before you arrived at good design. But, um, as far as testing these tools, um, I, I think they're good, you know, I'm, I'm definitely happy to share that.
And also, I think it would help, once we get to the public hearing, something that you did in your last presentation was you said, "Well, if we did the, you know, the primary build date of 1970 on, as opposed to 1930, you said 1970 would be like 75% of the parcels." So that was really helpful to have that information. Do you have a sense of 1930 on, like, how many parcels we're actually talking about?
Yeah, we had that, um...
I think we got that list from Allison.
We got that list from the Historical Commission. I don't, uh, have it in front of me right now, but Tim might have it, um, in the folder from last time around.
I mean, we don't need it now, just for the presentation when we have the public hearing. It gave back those kind of facts.
My thinking, my thinking was it was 100? No.
It's, it's here, yeah, and, um...
Yeah. 153, but...
153. And some of them may not work, you know, like...
Yeah.
The, the 75 Canton Ave was sort of marginal, whether it would work in part because of the position of the existing house. So, so much back from the, more than required from the front yard, that, you know, there's not really maybe a suitable place to do new units. But maybe what would work there is just renovating the existing and getting whatever would fit in the existing, if that were an alternative to a large house. I mean, the idea, I think, uh, you know, one might argue whether 3,000 is a large house, but you start getting up, um, in some of these. Uh, what did, did we say 3,000 is up? Did we put that requirement? We talked about that last time.
4,000 square feet.
4,000, right. Yeah, so it's not actually even 153 because we eliminated the, can, can you zoom back out, Tim? So we took 10, 31, scroll down. We took 36 off of that 153.
Okay, and, um...
So that's 117 parcels, based on what the Historical Commission provided us.
And it's not only historical, it's, it's, it's all, it's all houses 3,000. Oh, actually, it is historical, it was 1930. 1930, okay, all right, sorry. Okay, thank you.
The potential is 117 max.
Okay.
But that's also, I mean, we're not expecting that there's gonna be this massive influx.
No.
No, no. I think that helps people, you know, picture, that, you know, and then they go back to their neighborhood and they say, "Well, how many houses do I have?" Anyway, so they...
We're just, we're just trying to put tools in our toolbox, you know? I mean, we need a bunch of new tools, and this is just one more. And we'll see what people have to say about it. But I think it's time for us to move it forward so that we can actually open that next phase of discussion.
But I do think what Denny's point is well taken, that if we say, even before you get to that 5,000 square feet per, uh, unit, yep, you say, "It has to be built before 1930 and it has to be 4,000 square feet built by that time period." And we've identified, you know, maximum 117 sites that would meet that criteria. That's right off the bat, sets it out there that it's not 75%, Denny, like we were just saying, right? So I, I do think that's an important sort of get those basics out right, right out front when talking about it. I agree.
The universe of property is pretty small, yeah. Okay, so if folks are inclined, I mean, Rich, do you have anything about the, about this that you want to add? Are you inclined to allow us to advance it?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Denny, are you all set?
Yep.
Okay. And let's make a motion, somebody can make a motion to advance this to the Board of Selectmen as amended, as discussed tonight.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? And let's do a roll call vote. Denny Swinton?
Yes.
Uh, Cheryl Pogias?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Will Anderson, yes. Okay, that's good. So we have one other policy item that we clearly cannot get into tonight because it's so late. And thank you all for hanging in. I feel like we're, we've had a couple of long meetings, but I do feel like we're oddly making progress. Um...
Oddly?
Because it feels like we're not. We're in the weeds so much. We are making progress.
We're always making progress.
Well, we did, we did two letters. We did two site eligibility letters. We did a zoning bylaw.
And our last meeting went on for way too long, but it was incredibly productive. So I think it's been great. Um, so I apologize for that, but there's one other item that I really, really want to bring to everybody's attention. Kathleen drafted accessory dwelling units article. We can't talk about it tonight because we're all half asleep, but it's a short, two-page article. I really want to talk about it at our next meeting. And I honestly would like to ask the selectmen to give us an opportunity forward if after discussion at our next meeting, we feel comfortable doing so.
I did send comments on that as well.
Yeah, you did. I saw that. Thanks. I will read it.
It's not, I mean, all, all I'm asking is that we leave, that we ask the selectmen to leave us the room to get back to them either during or just after their meeting to put this article forward if we're, if we're in agreement next week.
The one thing I just want to point out quickly is that this, um, are making what we've talked about as being kind of improvements to the existing, it's not going, um, and, and doing a major expansion of who would be allowed to live in these. I think that would require further analysis. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. These are some basic things that will make this work much better, right, Kathleen?
Yeah, and it's not to say, "Oh, you can go ahead and rent them out." We still have the requirement that it has to be, you know, owner occupied, la la la, all that sort of stuff. So it's not sort of opening the door to, you know...
It takes account of the hardships that exist in the current bylaw.
Yeah.
It's what it does.
And that's why I feel like it's kind of, it is some modest changes.
Yeah, I mean, it really, because right now, you build it and you have to, you have to build your, you fix your house up and then come in, get the permit, build it again. And then when you sell the house, you have to rip it out, even if you're selling it to somebody who wants to put their mother in there. So, yeah.
So I mean, that's why I, I think there's a shot. Maybe I'm a little late hour, but I think there's a shot that once we digest this, we could get to yes at our next meeting. And so I just believe the opportunity open because again, I just feel like this is just enough in the toolbox.
Yeah, as I said, it's not very long and it's not very complicated and it would be great.
So does anybody object to asking the selectmen to just keep that one item open on there or take a vote to allow this if we vote on it at our next meeting?
No objections.
No objection. Okay, good.
Great.
Oh, I think, unless anybody has anything else to discuss, now let's move on to discussion of the Housing Production Plan.
Does Tim need to vote on the budget or does we need to do that next week?
So, so the, the, the budget is due to, um, the accounting office on December 1st. So if we can at least just take some time next week, um, to just do a quick vote to allow me to submit that to the accounting, um, that would be, that would be great.
Now I'll look at it.
Just, just, just while I'm talking, condo conversion and ADU are all in the Housing Production Plan as recommended measures that the planning board should take. So, um, if you, if you get those across the finish line, you will be way, way ahead of the game in terms of, uh, your obligations under that plan. So good job.
So we all get gold stars? Fabulous.
Not until we start producing units. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, all in favor? Will that do a roll call? Kathleen?
Yep.
Denny?
Yep.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
April, yes. Thank you, everyone.